Thank you for those who are gathered here. Be with us in the business that is intended to. Give us wisdom and discernment in the decisions to be made. Give us clarity in our communication, both those speaking and those who hear. And thank you for your blessings for us, those in this room and in our city. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
John Gordy, please read the roll.
Henry Davis, he is here. Valerie Shea and Dr. Purley both have excused absences, so we'll go to Dr. Byrne.
Present.
Oliver Davis.
Here.
Vice President Deeter.
Present.
Mr. Purley.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Tim Scott.
Present.
That would be seven present.
Hold on, that's.
We report to the Subcommittee on Minutes to the Common Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the January 12th and January 26th, 2015 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Tim Scott, David Byrne.
Motion's approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under Special Business, before we get to the mayor, I'd like to welcome Boy Scout Troop 572 from Granger Lions. You guys all stand up, please. Thank you for being in attendance. Y'all stay awake.
Awake, not away.
Now we'll have, under Special Business, the Mayor's Annual Address of Finances in General Condition. Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to say this is about 15, 20 minutes long. It is a report. We will not be taking questions. Any council members wish to have any questions for the mayor, please do so one-on-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Appreciate the council and the opportunity to be here. Just a quick reminder, this address is part of a statutory requirement that annually, at a meeting of the council, the mayor present an update on the general condition of finances in the city. Since this administration has been in office, we have divided this statutory state of the fiscal affairs of the city from the State of the City of Drex, which is scheduled for March 4th to be held at IUSB, and information will come out about that shortly. I will do my best not to put anybody to sleep. There are a fair amount of facts and figures here, but won't go into too much detail noting that if council members want any further information, be happy to meet one-on-one or follow-up of writing of any questions that should come our way. Recognize this is probably a bit of an eye chart if you're not sitting up front, but I'll just walk through a few highlights of the revenue and expenditures for the city. What we're showing here is the actual, so not what was budgeted, but what was actually spent. And as you recall, the City of South Bend budgets on a cash accounting basis, so you're seeing the actual cash flows in and out of the city year to year. I just want to draw your attention to a couple of things. The first is that the general fund, which is the thing we most need to make sure is balanced, was in balance. We ran slightly ahead, which is to say we got expenditures below revenues in the general fund by just about $400,000. So that's right around 1%, meaning we're in line with where you'd want to be, running it pretty tight. Another thing to note, if you were just looking at this chart without context, it would appear the revenues had taken a sharp drop from $62 million in 2012 to about $55 million in 2014. Just want to indicate, this is mostly the result of a change in the way we account for our funds in the city. We've made an adjustment with the Controller's Office to make the accounting more accurate. So looking at 2012, sorry, 2013 to 2014 is not quite apples-to-apples. And actually, the difference in accounting, which has to do with the fact that we no longer count public safety LOAT in the general fund, because that leads to a kind of double counting. If you were apples-to-apples, you'd be right about the same. In other words, the difference amounts to about $7 million, $1 million, which means if we were accounting the old way, we'd be right up around that $62 million number. Also, just to give you a sense of the overall economic scope of the City of South Bend's operations, that's not only the general fund, but everything we do, sewer, water, trash, wastewater, bonds, parks, recreation, and so forth, came this last year to $268 million of economic activity. So we're approximately a one-quarter of a billion-dollar operation. Just to give you a little bit of a sense of how this has changed over time, you'll see again, the general fund shows lower, but that's largely just a result of the way we do our accounting. I do want you to note, you'll see a real drop there in the enterprise fund. So on the revenue side, you'll see substantial reduction in 2013 and 2014 compared to 2011 and '12. The reason for that is because there were not wastewater revenue bonds issued in 2013 and '14. So what you're going to see is that revenue comes in in a big lump there, and then you'll see it spent over time. So in the coming years, you'll see a higher rate of expenditure, lower level of revenue, because we do that cash accounting and we show the money coming in all at once. Similarly, redevelopment, you had a spike, having mostly to do with property tax collections coming in late with the state. You'll see that smoothed out over more recent years. One note of caution, something that I want the council to be aware of. When you look at the internal service funds, you'll notice a steady and rather steep increase there. This is the fund where we account, among other things, for employee healthcare and health insurance costs. Those costs have been rising. We're working to get those under control through offering new plans that we think are more fiscally responsible, as well as wellness measures and a city healthcare clinic, which we look forward to discussing in more detail with the council going forward. Because we are a self-insured body, that is something that we're going to need to watch, because even though we are about a $260 million operation, we're also a small enough operation that even one or two major preventable illnesses, something you would notice on the bottom line of our budget, in terms of taking care of our employees. And so employee wellness is not only the right thing to do, but very important for the fiscal health of our city. Here, you're just seeing the expenditure. On page four here, you're seeing the expenditure categories tracked and measured in the same way. A few things to note, obviously, you're seeing the enterprise funds ticking up here. Again, what you're seeing is the spending of those wastewater resources. This is mostly in order to comply with our EPA and Department of Justice mandate related to the long-term control plan. And I know there's a lot of discussion in the community and the administration about what we can do to get those costs under control, but those are budgeted and funded from the prior wastewater revenues. There's also a lot of capital expenditure. A couple of things to note, Fire Station Number Five and the new training facility for the fire department. So those were among the things that are going to be captured in that debt and capital line out that we see there. And you will also see that redevelopment expenditures, a bit lower in 2014, but what you're seeing here is largely, again, a function of the cash accounting, because those are planned on a larger timeframe than when they're spent. If you look at the overall picture, what you're seeing here is that the overall revenue and expenditure of the city is reflecting the increased sewer costs. So you've got this big gap here where there's a lot more revenue coming in. This isn't a yearly flow. What you're seeing here is these big bonds come in, we get the cash in a lump sum, and then we begin spending it. So most of what you see between the blue line and the red line there is not structural or operational. What you're seeing is that we're now spending the resources that came in through those bonds in order to meet our obligations on the sewers. Other things that affected 2014 expenditures that are structural that we are going to need to continue looking at include that health insurance fund, bringing that into balance, and getting the public safety LOAT fund into a long-term sustainable pattern. This is the general fund, which is the fund that we make sure is always balanced, working with the council going into every budget season. There's this weird artifact here in 2008, 2009, but that's just the result of the way the state gave us our property taxes this year. So you can imagine taking an average of that. You really want that blue line to track the red line. Again, I just want to point out, you're going to see a lower number here in the reporting from now on. That's a result of accounting, not a result of revenue or expenditure in the general fund dropping dramatically. It's not growing either, so we can expect the revenues and expenses available to us in the general fund to be more or less flat for the near to medium term. Just to give you a sense of where most of the city's money comes from, you'll see that the single largest category, and I think this will come as a surprise to some taxpayers, the largest category actually is charges for services. So if you think about the enterprise funds and what the city does that we actually bill for, including wastewater, delivery of water, and solid waste, as well as a lot of things in, for example, the Parks Department. So up until the transition Zoo Gate revenue and other parks programs that residents pay some kind of fee to participate in. Those collectively are actually accounting for 30% of our revenue. The next category is property taxes. After that, you have intergovernmental funds. What we mean by that is grants, pension relief. This is where a lot of your state and federal money is going to show up, from CDBG to pension relief funds that come in by way of the state. Then local income taxes, a category which became much more significant in the way that the property tax caps that were implemented hitting us in 2008, 2009, and consisting mostly of public safety LOAT, county option income tax, and then the economic development or EDIT income tax. So that's where our money comes from. Here's where it goes. The single greatest category of expenditures for the city in 2014 was utilities. Again, these are essentially funded on a pay-as-you-go basis, other than the capital needs. So you're seeing the revenues that come in through water bills, sewer bills, and trash bills, going to pay for the delivery of service. The next largest category is public safety, and then after that, we've got economic development. This is where you're going to see the bulk of TIF money. When we say neighborhoods for these purposes, that's where we're going to have parks, street department, vacant and abandoned houses, code enforcement and related activities. General government, 4%. This is where you're really going to see a lot of the overheads. So that's where you and I belong, for example, the mayor's office, the council, as well as admin and finance and legal. And as you'll see, we're running a pretty disciplined level in terms of how much overhead is costing us relative to the overall expenditures of our $260, $270 million enterprise. The vast majority of general fund dollars go to public safety. It's $47.2 million, counting for about 86% of the general fund. The next biggest category being general government. And then culture and recreation. This is not including parks and recreation, which we account for separately. This is where you're looking at things like Morris Performing Arts Center and the Palais. And then code enforcement and animal control, also not appearing in the general fund here, because we group them in the same category of funding as building and park. When we look at property tax collections, again, this is one of the biggest things I want to be sure that the council and the public are familiar with. There's no rapid uptick in property taxes in recent years, nor can we expect to. The good news is, average collection rate on property taxes is about 95%, so it's pretty near to the best you can expect, although we always want to make sure the collection rate is as close to 100 as possible. You'll see that TIF property tax revenue has increased since 2008. The biggest thing driving that, economic growth, and you're seeing a lot of the growth in our airport River West area, south side, and then the Northeast residential and River East TIFs. And then the red is just to break out how much of the property tax collection is happening in those TIF areas versus what's available to the city. Local option income taxes are paying, playing a proportionally larger role. People think of income taxes for the federal and state government, property taxes for local government, but the truth is, we very much rely on local option income taxes. And you see that green area there, that's your public safety LOAT, the county option income tax in red, and then the ceded economic development income tax in blue. A bit of a spike there in 2012, that had to do with the state giving us a dispersment after a prior accounting error. So if you want to look for what to expect, I'd look more at the last two years, 2013, '14, than I would at '12. I'm not sure you'll see a spike like we did from '11 to '12 happen again. You really want to smooth that out and do an average. The real signal year for option income taxes in the community was 2010. That's when the LOAT rate of .25% was added, and that's also when the ceded rate was increased from .2% to .4%. Just want to make sure everybody understands that's not 2% and 4%, that's 0.2% and 0.4% of income that is taxed at that rate in order to support economic development. Whenever we do this address, it's important to look at human resources costs, the single biggest category, not in terms of the different types of activities, but in terms of expenditure is people. The number of full-time employees on the city's books is down. This does not really, though, indicate that you have fewer people doing the city's work. A lot of this has to do with the public-private partnership that we now have over at the zoo. So that accounts for 22 full-time employees, still serving in similar capacity to what they were, but no longer city employees, rather they are now employees of a nonprofit zoological society which runs that body. I will say, just given the fiscal constraints we're under, certainly no reason to expect the number of full-time employees in the city to increase, other than filling vacancies that emerge now and then. And we continue to look for ways, through technology, to be able to deliver the same services that we always do with fewer people. Just so you have a sense of what our people are doing, again, this is full-time employees. The single greatest category, public safety, 586 of our 1,098 active employees as of the end of last year, are in the police and fire departments. Next largest category, public works to include sewer, water, wastewater, trash pickup. Parks and Recreation, this is a little deceptive in the sense that this is one of our biggest categories for part-time work. So you're going to see a lot of seasonal employees coming in Parks and Rec, but they're not showing up in this count, because this is full-time. Then you've got community investment, a pretty small shot, especially when you think about the jobs and investment created out of there. Code enforcement and animal control here in the 20s, and then admin and finance running at 21 full-time employees. It can be difficult when I'm just throwing numbers out, I know, to get a sense of how our fiscal health actually is, where we stack up with other communities. So that's why I wanted to show you our bond rating, which continues to be something the South Bend can be very proud of. In fact, it was recently reaffirmed that we are keeping that AA bond rating. So just to give you a sense, the bulk of communities, and this is all local governments, we're talking school districts, counties, cities, townships, almost all of them are to the right of this dotted line, which means they have an inferior bond rating compared to on the left side of this line. So you've got AAA, that's the state of Indiana itself, that's the only government entity you'll find in the state that has AAA bond rating. Then you've got a handful of municipalities, including the city of Carmel, a couple of school districts in the area close to Indianapolis that have AA plus, AA, and the AA bond rating is where South Bend's going to fall. We're considered a Class II city. It's basically a city with over 35,000 people and a nine-member council system of government like we have. There is no Class II city in the state of Indiana with a better bond rating than the city of South Bend. So this is an indication of the prudence that this council and administration have exercised, that we've been able for many years now to maintain this bond rating. Just to be clear, this does not mean that we are flush by any means. What it does indicate is that the tough decisions that we've made to make sure we hold the line on spending while meeting the needs of the city of South Bend are paying off and that the bond markets are recognizing it by giving us a bond rating that is higher than a lot of communities, even communities with more population or communities with a higher per capita income than us. Here again, just a quick look at the league table. So if you were looking among the Class II cities, you'd see South Bend and Fishers up top with that AA, we're the only ones who have it among Class II cities. Then you've got a few other communities, Bloomington, Fort Wayne, Lafayette, and Columbus at the AA minus level. You go two notches down from us, that's where you're going to see Mishawaka, Elkhart, and a number of other communities which have strong finances, but not quite at that AA level that South Bend enjoys, thanks to the good budget work that we've done. Want to give you a sense of what it is going to take to keep that bond rating and what it would take to make it even better. These are some of the things that the rating companies have indicated they look at. They want to see economic diversification, not relying too much on any one employer. They want to see cash reserves, that was cited as a reason that we're pretty well-regarded financially. They also commented on the strength of our financial operations and the presence of university and healthcare systems that are expected to be creating jobs and revenue for this community for the long haul. If we wanted to hit the next level, we should focus, as we do, on unemployment and income levels in our community. We've seen unemployment fall from nearly 12% to about 7% in the community. If we wanted to see, for example, something I've never heard of happening, which is a AA plus rating for a Class II city, the way to do it, the single biggest thing in my view that we could do to get there, is to increase our unemployment, or improve our unemployment rate at a higher rate, building on the work that's gone on in the city in the last, in particular in the last year, where we've begun to see a lot of results in job creation. Lastly, just want to acknowledge the strong work of our admin and finance team. Yet again this year, we received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is the 24th consecutive year that South Bend has been awarded this CAF reward, so this is a credit to everybody working in John Murphy's team, admin and finance. I should also let you know that we're looking for a budget award, we're in the hunt for that, something we haven't done in a while, and we submitted the paperwork to try to get that, as well from this same body, the Government Finance Officers Association. Again, I know this stuff is a little bit dry, but these finances are the lifeblood of our city and our ability to do what residents expect of us. They trust us with their money, as they do with their lives, and I want to thank this council for the very vigilant stewardship that you all have joined our administration with, making sure we do right by the citizens and residents who trust us with those funds. If there are, I think there are abundance of appendix notes, if anybody's clamoring for a more detailed deep dive into our financial status, be happy to go over that with council members at a future time. Thank you.
Thank you. And as per the agenda, Mr. Mayor, reports to city offices, I think you pretty much gave it, if there was anything else that you wanted to add?
Out of respect for the time of everybody here, I'll consider that good for the reports to city offices. But again, if there are any questions that council members want me to be sure to cover in my next appearance here, please just go ahead and call me or send an email over or reach out through President Scott, and we'll be sure to get that done.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The Committee of the Whole is now called to order. The Committee of the Whole holds the portion of the council meeting where the common council sits as a committee. The title of each proposed ordinance is read by the city clerk, followed by a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which held a public hearing on the bill. The chairperson announces the committee's advisory recommendation. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from an area plan staff member will be first given by the petitioner, who will give a formal presentation at the podium. All other proposed ordinance, the formal presentation by the petitioner will be given immediately after the committee's chairperson's advisory recommendation update. Following the formal presentation, each council member may ask the person given the formal presentation, questions only, as they pertain to the petition that is before you. Council will have the opportunity, when we resolve back into the Committee of the Whole, to answer any questions or make any statements that you would like to make at that time. There are handouts covering this portion of the council member meeting if you would like to have any additional information. At this time, I would ask city clerk John Gordy to please give second reading to Bill 59-14.
Public hearing on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Section 6-37.1 of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing vacant, building, maintenance, and registration.
Do you hear the substitute version?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote.
Aye.
Go support, the motion carries. We'd like to now have a committee report regarding substitute Bill 59-14.
Yes, health and safety met earlier today, and we send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
We'll now have the petitioner, we ask that you state your name and the address for the minutes, please.
Good evening, my name is Tim Scott. I live at 711 Forest Avenue, South Bend, 46616. The purpose of this bill is to become neutral, revenue-neutral with our fees regarding vacant and abandoned registration and the actual information that we have to use within code and legal and other departments to search for this information. The idea of this bill is to increase the fine from $50 to $300. The reason for the $300 is, when you look at the research time put in by inspection from code enforcement, photo documentation, printing supplies, postage equipment, title search on property, clerical staff, and management, that reasonably and actually conservatively comes up to about $290. So the new proposal for 300 would make us revenue-neutral. Instead of the taxpayers paying for the research to find vacant abandoned homes and who owns those properties to get them registered, this would cover that cost. Now, this is only to deal with people that are not responsive to registering their property. Those that are willing to register their property voluntarily, willing to work with code enforcement on this, there's no charge for these fees. This is basically trying to find those that are non-responsive, because there's a safety issue with these properties and understanding who's in contact with them. So the idea is a little progressive on the fee base. If it's three or less residential units per building structure, the current proposed, or the current fee right now is $50, the proposal would be 300. If it's three units, if it's more than three units, the current fee is $250. We're proposing 500 for the first year, and going from $350 on the second year to $750, and 500 on the third year, and thereafter to $1,000. This is a motivation to get people with these larger buildings to have them registered so we know the contact information, so we can stay on top of who owns them. The issue is, this isn't just a one-time search. What it is, is every year we have to, or the city administration has to look over this registration to make sure these haven't changed hands. Typically, people aren't reporting this to the city that we've found. So, how many properties are we talking right now? There are 930 properties in question. And some of the interesting data is 248 or 27% of them are out-of-state owners. 24% of them, 255 properties, are company-owned, either investment bank, real estates, and people just flipping houses. There's 26 homes, which are 3% that are owned by banks, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, Fannie Mae. There are 32 vacant houses that are owned in land trusts, so like 123 Land Trust, Na Am Street, kind of that LLC, where you really don't understand who owns it. And only 16 houses within the 930 are within nonprofits, church, government-owned, Habitat for Humanity, NNN, South Bend Heritage, HUD, Veterans Affairs and such. There are only, out of 930, there are only 38 homes that are registered. So that leaves roughly almost 400 homes that are owned within the area that are still kind of pending on who actually owns them and what the information is. So again, there are exceptions to this. If there's a voluntary registration of the property, there's no fee required. If the director of Department of Code Enforcement shall have a limited authority to waive accrued fees and fines by case basis when those costs are determined to impede positive action of individuals' properties and rehabilitate benefits. So basically, if someone's working with code, they're working on their property, they have a plan, the fees can be waived. And of course, if a property is in a state of repair already, occupied, utilities turned on, or on the other side, a demolition order has been contracted or has begun demolition, there's no fee required there as well. So what this does is look at the non-responsive that are holding properties within our city. And right now, the taxpayers are paying for the search and maintenance of the contact information. So the idea here is to make it revenue-neutral. We're not trying to profit on this, but we're trying to bring it up to speed where taxpayers aren't paying for that dollar.
Thank you.
And one other thing, I'm sorry, Chair. I would also like to thank Randy Wilkerson and Code Enforcement for help on this, Tasha Oss, Outlaw within legal, and Trent Spulster from AmeriCorps Vista, who's been working with vacant abandoned properties.
Well, now I'll move to the council. I'm going to start with Councilmember Henry Davis to ask if you have any questions of petitioner based on the presentation.
Sure, thank you, Chairman. Tim, thanks for your presentation. I think that this was quite thorough, obviously from the last time.
Yes, sir.
A question I do have, after studying back through this again, why is this a legislative matter? matter?
It is within the ordinance that it's $50 on the fee, so what it does is change the ordinance to become revenue neutral.
Yeah, I understand that, I think you probably didn't ask it the way I can understand it better. It's a legislative matter, meaning you're changing the language to the bill in order to define another new cost. My question is, if this was already a bill, we have budgeting sessions every summer, why isn't this not handled during budgeting time versus a new piece of legislation being offered? There is something there that still largely concerns me, raising fees, I've never really been for raising fees or even taxes, but here we are again doing it, measured against the taxes or taxpayers paying for it, when taxpayers pay for all of these services. So, in my estimation, it will see, seems to me that the issue is not legislatively, it's enforcement. The enforcement is not happening, and if we need more money for enforcement, that should happen during budgeting time versus off-budgeting time, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. So, even within the budget, it would have to be changed within the language of the ordinance. And I agree, I think in the past, there has not been any real discipline in holding people accountable on this. I think new people in code, new people within the administration, that this was an idea born out of them, as well as myself on vacant abandoned task force, to write that. And what we want to do is work with those that are responsible, therefore, there's the exceptions. What this does is, the ones that are not willing to work, but have basically degradation on our city, we want to get their attention. And what we want to be able to do is understand the true cost of what it costs for code enforcement or anybody to do this research. So, therefore, it's revenue neutral again, and it's balanced. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Varner?
Thank you, Ms. White. One of the many things that people call us about is, why can't you do something about that vacant or abandoned house? Or it looks like it's vacant or abandoned. Oftentimes, code tries, only to find out that we can't find the owner, we can't find the broker, we can't find anyone.
Councilmember Varner, you asking a question of the petitioner?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Do you have opportunity to make your comments?
I will, I'm sorry.
You're more than welcome. Councilmember Oliver Davis?
What data do you have, President Scott, that shows that raising these fees from $50 to $300 will meet the purpose, which is to, you know, help out with this whole vacant and abandoned housing situation? What data will raising fees from this amount to the 300 amount show that that will have a positive impact upon reducing the situation that we have currently in our city?
I don't know if it will have a positive impact on that. What I know it will do, and usually what it does do with people, when you affect their pocketbook, they pay attention, and they're willing to communicate, and I think that would lead to positive impacts.
Have you seen that in any, and if any, as we looked at, this is starting this with the snow situation we just had two weeks ago, in terms of having everybody within the administration just ask for $200, and we worked that down to 25. Because the basic issue there again is, what issues do we show? I mean, have you seen it in other cities across the state, where they raised their fees, and all of a sudden, you had your vacant and abandoned housing situation come down? And they were able to catch these people, because many of them live out of state, out of country, out of everything else. So, can you give us any data that says, city A raised their fees from 50 to 100 to 200, and they were able to catch more people by doing this?
No, and it's not about that, it's about covering the cost within our own city. So we really didn't look outside to other cities, we looked within our own city and realized that every time we do a search, the city's actually losing money, taxpayers are actually losing money. So, the only example that we're looking at is within our own city and our own process.
Then if it's about cost only, then again, I go back to what Councilman Davis just said, that during the presentation of budget season, why did not the co-director present that in the budget? Because we passed a balanced budget last year for 215, the state requires us to do that. So, we have a balanced budget in place at this present time, according to state rules. So, why didn't they argue the point from the administration's standpoint, that we needed to do this while we were in budget season, if it was just about money?
The concept was formulated after the budget season, and it's with new people within code that are wanting this, and to have that, we have to have the language changed within the ordinance first.
So therefore, if other departments at this time want to raise their fees, even though we have a balanced budget in place, they are free to come and present this, and we don't really care about what we put in place with the budget?
No, I think we need to look at it. If it's just applicable, I think we can look at it.
Because the argument that I have seen is, how do you differentiate between what we are doing now and another way of, this is a way of the city to raise fees, well, not raise fees, raise taxes, in a sense of, by charging all these fees? What would be your argument with that? Because we have a balanced budget in place.
Yeah, that's right.
We have a balanced budget in place, and so therefore, what cities have done in the past is to find ways to raise fees, okay? And so, this is a different, we call it raising fees, we don't call it raising taxes, but it's basically almost the same thing, which you, and I don't agree, if you don't agree, please share.
Well, I think the revenue would balance out what the cost of the searches are, and any other income could be applied somewhere else within the budget, however they want to structure the budget. But what it also does is, it actually directs that fee or tax, as you would, towards those that are not being good stewards within the city, instead of everybody else, individuals.
So you're saying then, since the code enforcement came before us, and we passed a balanced budget before them, and they have, if we don't pass this tonight, then their department will be in debt by the time we get to the budget end of this year?
No, I think this is just one facet that would right-size their budget.
No, I'm talking, will they be in debt if we don't pass this?
I doubt it.
Why not?
I haven't looked at the budget, I'm not.
So if they're not in, my point then, is if we have already passed a balanced budget, the code enforcement came up here, they made a presentation that was approved by us, and we agreed with everything, and now they're coming back for a new idea of saying that they wanted to do this, yet if you don't pass this tonight, it doesn't necessarily hurt them at all. They are able to still do their job, still do enforcement, still do everything else. So that's what you're sharing with me, right?
Well, I think what it does is hurt our taxpayer dollars, because it's going forward something that is more of a waste, instead of having those with the property held responsible pay for those services to look up their contract.
So it hurts our taxpayer dollars in the sense of what?
Excuse me?
I mean, is that an enforcement issue? Isn't that more of an enforcement issue from that standpoint?
Still, even if they forced, enforced the $50, it would not cover the cost of actually doing the research.
So therefore, the whole motivation with this is to just do neutral, budget neutral, but not necessarily to increase going after these folk or whatever? That was, because the way it was presented earlier to us, it was also to go after people, you know, been out of town and everything else, that was the motivation. Isn't that not the issue?
It's part of it.
So therefore, again, I don't see for raising fees on people on a balanced budget that they already have, which we already balanced the budget, and this is something, again, that I'm concerned of, it would make a precedence that other departments will continue to come after they. It nullifies what we do at budget season. Because at budget season, they are supposed to be able to forecast everything for the next year and look at that. And why then should we honor a department that was not able to look at that and see their new ideas during the budget season, when we had over three and a half months of budget season?
I'm going to ask.
No, ma'am, with all due respect, I do have some questions.
I want you to make sure you ask a portion of, you still have opportunity.
I'm asking my questions.
Your comments.
I'm asking questions, but I have to clarify, please. Sometimes you have to explain with Ms. Chair, sometimes you have to explain the questions so you can have a good understanding of that. So I would have asked not to interrupt on that, please, because that was done two weeks ago by a person, and sometimes when we ask these kind of questions, because we take a little time, I don't want us to be pushed and rushed to answer questions. We already have not been able to speak to the mayor when we ask questions, and I would prefer you not to interrupt when we do that.
I want to make sure.
I understand the rules, ma'am, but please don't do that.
When we're in this portion, you're asking questions of the petitioner.
I am asking questions of the petitioner.
But you will have opportunity to make any comments.
I'm asking questions of the petitioner, and if you show me the rules, or I cannot do that, please do that. Thank you. Because I never did that when I was, when I was chair of the, you asked a question, Ms. White. So please don't do that. Okay, back to my point before I was interrupted by a chair. I would prefer that, again, that we look at the issue of when we, when we've done with fees, how is this not a tax?
Again, if it has to do with the budget, there's new people in place within code, and for any changes to be made, which is being recommended by myself and code enforcement and city administration, that this is prudent. This is our presentation, this is what we're recommending.
So what was the need of us having a budget season, so they were supposed to come in and do that? Aren't they supposed to do that in budget season?
Again, this is after the budget.
The budget just happened, and we approved that just three months ago.
Correct.
And they were supposed to forecast for the whole year. I'm concerned that we set a precedence with that. How does this not become a precedence for other departments?
It can be, and it can be case by case. This is the case that we're presenting today.
And in case by case, what would you then use that as a measure to say to other departments, no, we gave this to this department, so we will be fair and balanced on our decision? What measures would you put in place?
I can't speak on what other departments would bring towards us.
I mean, because we already have the legal, we have this, we can have other departments that come up and some parks or whatever, and say, we did not look at the budget, we didn't do this, and now we want to have other fees. How would you differentiate between what the park would want for fees, just like last week, we had snow, they wanted more fees, from public works? How do you differentiate between that department versus this department, so we can be fair and balanced across the board, that's all I'm asking for?
And that's all we're doing, we're presenting just for this and this alone.
I agree with that, but how do you not set a precedence for other departments?
I don't know if we do.
What do you mean, how, explain that?
I think this is basically a circular argument, I don't know how we get out of it, but.
No, it's not a circular argument.
This is what we're presenting here.
Okay, and so my, the concern again is the fact that I believe that, I don't see the difference between this time and budget season, and that's a serious concern.
To legal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Negative.
Councilmember Forrester? Well, now, if there's no other questions, the petitioner, we're now move to the public hearing portion. If there's anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of substitute Bill 59-14, who asks if you come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Rebecca Kaiser, 913 Diamond Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. As most of you know, I've been working on the vacant and abandoned building situation since some of you were before on the council, so about eight years, both with the NNN and with residents in my neighborhood. What most of the people apparently don't realize is that, basically, President Davis, or, excuse me, Councilman Davis, you are asking once again that the rest of the citizens of South Bend.
I want to ask that you give comments in support of the bill and not personally.
I am.
Okay.
But we will be paying, that means those of us who are not the wealthy ones who buy these houses on the tax sale, to do the investigation, because we live here, and they live in California and Illinois, and they bought these vacant and abandoned homes on a tax sale to go on a profit and loss statement. And most of us know that. Now, yes, there are a few landlords here in the city who bought them for their own business, Shell Game, but why do the citizens of South Bend have to continue to pay because we aren't charging enough? Finally, we have a legal department with Crystal Briscoe, who is fantastic in doing something so the citizens, the everyday people who live here, don't have to pay for the rich and the people who are making a mockery out of the city of South Bend's problems. How can we not raise the rates? We raise the rates to cover the fact that you pay people more to do the investigation. Why should the taxpayers have to pay for that, when there's people who are abusing the system that need to be paid for? Thank you.
Is there anyone else present wishing to speak in support of substitute Bill 59-14?
Hi, I'm Transpulstra, I'm actually the AmeriCorps Vista that's been working on this BNA registration program, and I would like to stay in favor of it. These numbers come from data that we entered, you know, that we researched and estimate that comes into it, and I think out of everybody I could probably speak, obviously, this is the one thing I work in code enforcement, I could probably speak in favor of any better than anybody else here in this room. To be honest, when I started working on this initiative in August, when I started my July, my AmeriCorps term in July, I kind of figured, at first I thought, okay, $50, that's reasonable. And then when I set the time mailing letters, between postage, between clerical work, the amount of time I have to go, speaking with inspectors, having inspectors go out to do inspections, speaking with people, I realized $50 is actually a very small amount of money. And so, the 200, the $300 that Councilman Scott is proposing is, comes from between postage, between paper, between envelopes, between time inspectors have to go out to do inspections, between the director, his time having to spend speaking with people or speaking with, you know, speaking with inspectors or other individuals. So this is a number that I believe is very fair. I believe $300 would be net neutral, and also, as Councilman Scott mentioned as well, I've noticed with this BNA registration is a very good tool to kind of wake up owners of vacant abandoned properties as well, too. So to increase it from $50, which is already getting a lot of attention from here, to $300, will not only make this net neutral, but it will also raise, raise the attention of people who still own BNA properties here in South Bend.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to speak? I'm asking everyone that wishes to speak in support of substitute Bill 59-14, if you come to the podium at this time, state your name and address, please.
My name is Ronza Richards, 1020 Clover Street, South Bend. I would be in support of this after hearing the presentation tonight, because I agree with Oliver Davis that we don't want them to go off-budget, but I believe that by raising this fee, they would then have those expenses paid for, and they could use the budgeted expenses for what they needed to be, instead of be doing this when the owners of the properties should be helping bear that burden.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, my name is Jerry Frye. I reside, excuse me, at 319 North William Street, here in downtown South Bend. I relocated from Porter County just under two years ago. I am a small business, a small industrial real estate, I own three properties downtown that I'm rehabbing. One of the attractions that brought me over to South Bend, one of them was the code enforcement. It encouraged me to come in downtown, where I knew that there were people that were focusing on this kind of stuff, and let me say, my properties are not polished, I'm working on them, but I do support this bill. I think, I think, I think it does send a strong deterrent. I think at 50 bucks, it could be an issue where, hey, you know what, I'll deal with it later. 300 bucks says, you know what, I own five houses, I'm going to make sure everybody knows who owns them. That's all I have.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to substitute Bill 59-14? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Ask if you come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Jesse Davis, Peel Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I think when we're revisiting this bill, was this not brought up at a past council meeting?
Yes.
That's why it's amended. And I think I came up and spoke about spoken opposition then, because if you've got people out there who could care less and they're not going to pay this $50, why? Because you raised the rate, are they going to jump up all of a sudden and care? There's still $300 to someone who has this building sitting there, if they didn't pay the 50, they're not going to pay the 300. The other problem you're going to run The other problem you're going to run into, I have a property, uh, in Mishawak, Indiana, and that property has been sold, but the person who bought it has yet to transfer the title. So code enforcement then calls me and sends me letters saying, hey, you still own this property, you need to go mow it, we're going to send a mower out and mow it. And in turn, I haven't owned the property for almost two years. So it really, it, it's kind of defeating everything because a lot of times this research you're doing, you're probably doing it in vain because a lot of the owners probably aren't the actual owners. So I mean, what are they going to do to distinguish if they're finding the right person or not? If you send me a letter and say, I own this property and we're going to fine you for this, I'm sure going to fight it and I'm not going to pay you and I'm sure there's going to be other instances, instances similar to that. But if I'm not going to respond to you over a fifty dollar fine and I'm not worried about, I'm surely not going to respond to you on that same property for, just because you're raising the rate on it.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to speak in opposition to bill fifty-nine dash fourteen? Seeing no one, the public hearing portion is non-close. We'll go back to the council.
There is a chance for rebuttal. Mr. Scott would like it.
Um, just real quick again, um, for the D title change, uh, definitely brings up an issue that, um, you know, someone had to do research, send out that letter or code, had to go and, and check on that. And we want good business, uh, owners and responsible landlords or property owners to, um, communicate with code and work that out. Uh, again, the exceptions, I think, are, are fair that if a property is within, um, rehab, someone's working on it, someone's in contact with code, these fees are waived. These are for the non-responsive.
Thank you. We'll now move to the council portion. I would ask council members if you'd like to make any additional comments. I will start with council member, uh, Henry Davis.
Thank you. Um, Tim, I, I got a question, I'm sorry. Um, the fees that are attached to houses that are not being registered, what happens to those houses after, let's say, a year or two years? Do they go on tax sale?
Um, if they go on tax sale, I know community investment can work with whomever buys that to alleviate some of that within the county. In any local links.
What I'm asking, let's say I own, register my property for like six years.
Right.
And I've accumulated fines above a thousand dollars. What's the penalty at that point? Does it continue to be charged, uh, for not registering or do it goes to a whole nother level?
Um, I think it goes to collections then and then, uh, legal would get involved.
You think?
Yes.
I, I would have thought that it will go to a, end up going to like a tax sale where the property itself be taken away. I, I need that clarified, is why I'm asking.
No, the tax sale would be because the property taxes weren't being paid on the property.
Exactly. But I'm seeing where houses that, okay, so if that's the case then, what's the penalty for not paying?
Uh, there again, legal would go through the collections process.
And then what? I mean, is it like garnishing your check? I mean, how, what happens? What's the penalty?
That would be the judgment of, you know, the civil suit. I, I'm not sure, but yeah, it could be any of that, Henry.
I'm just trying to clarify where, where, where the teeth are actually at. Um, the reason why I started off earlier with the legislative versus enforcement and in we get to talking about taxpayers, uh, not footing the bill, the folks who own these properties are taxpayers as well, if they're paying the property taxes.
Possibly, yes.
So, so when we're talking about taxpayers, we're talking about everybody. This is not a situation somebody is here for free. So the person that owns the house is a taxpayer. Legislative versus enforcement, I want to go back there. Um, Councilman Davis had a reasonable argument as well about if we have budgeting happening every year and, and, and we're not budgeting for the, the season, uh, properly and we're obviously not enforcing, enforcing it properly, you agreed earlier, then there's something else that's going on that we're not taking care of. And it's within our powers and duties as a council to say yea or nay to a budget that allows these things to happen or not. My concern is that we have so many other, um, issues with property management and properties that are not being taken care of, is that we are not making sure that the enforcement of the administration, that's where it comes from, is actually happening. We're going to get so far into it, the legislative part, to adding fees, adding taxes because somebody's not doing what they're supposed to, that the, that the enforcement part from the administration is never going to happen because it looks like that we're controlling the way the properties are supposed to be looking or the way that the tickets or citations are supposed to happen. That's not our job. That's not, we're, we're not here for that. And so I don't want to give a, or give them a false sense of reality to anyone that's here thinking that because we're going to offer a, a, a higher fee to register properties, that the problem itself goes away. It doesn't. It happens whether it's a dollar or three thousand dollars if the enforcement is happening. And we can't see, foresee right now that the enforcement was ever happening because this is not a new law. We're just increasing fees. And that's my issue. We're not, the job is not being done. And by us adding fees to it doesn't and will not suggest ever that the job will be getting done. That's why I'm saying it needs to go back to the enforcement level, back at the budget session and leave us out of it. Because we're putting ourselves in a position where we're looking like that we're controlling that when we don't control the enforcement. We do not. And I think that that sets a bad precedence. I think that what he was saying earlier make, single us out. It's the council people's fault for not getting it done. It's the council people not, for not, for, uh, the code enforcement not coming in. It's not my fault. It's not your fault as a council representative. That is administrative role from the administration. It's not our role. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Oliver.
Thank you, um, Ms. White. The, the only time this will come into play is when we can't identify or the owner of a property will not identify himself. And we have to do research, which takes time, which could take legal time, which could take, um, time for, uh, code, in order to try and enforce, as Mr. Davis says, those things which need to be acted upon. I'm not a big fan of taxes or fees, but with property ownership comes responsibility. And some of that responsibility is to, A, take care of your property and B, um, allow it to be known where the city has to go when they need to get in touch with you. I just don't see that as being a huge issue. If we're spending three hundred dollars on these researches and it's several hundred a year apparently, um, that adds up to a lot of money. If we're only asking fifty dollars as a normal fee, I think a fee of three hundred dollars, which accounts for the cost as we estimate them, is far more fair to everyone than it is to, and if it encourages some people to start paying, fine. If it doesn't get us any more, uh, we've done what we could, Mr. Davis is correct. The rest of it's up to enforcement and it's up to the, uh, office of the, uh, the mayor and the office of the attorney. I'm, I'm comfortable with this as an action.
Thank you. Councilman Oliver Davis.
Thank you. Um, my concern, like I've shared before, um, I think the budget season is a time when people need to forecast as many possibilities that can go wrong and can go right. And you do that. I'm concerned that if we, um, raise the fees now, um, I voted for the stop, um, um, changes because we kept the fee the same. I would have not voted against it if we had raised it up to the hundred dollars because of the fact that, um, that is something that should have been budgeted. She just come in January, right after we just did the budget and passed it at the beginning of, um, November, with, we, we just had Thanksgiving, Christmas and come back and say, okay, we need to raise fees. To me, was, was irresponsible of those who were dealing with that. And, um, after we took the time to go in and we asked, if you have any other needs, what are your needs? What are your concerns? We, I mean, we've asked that for years to budget people to the administration. We've asked that. And so to come back now and, and to then we have to be on the side of raising fees is a concern. Um, adding fees, we could get the code and become a setting of precedence. We have the summertime where we could, uh, cutting grass or unkept yards for people who have vacant properties. We have to do that all the time. And when, if they want to come back and say, well, we're not charging enough, are we then going to now in the middle of the summertime, raise the fees if we say we're not charging enough? I don't mind us charging more for those kind of, um, yards and making, um, people do that, but there should be a process. I don't want them to wait till the summertime and then all of a sudden we get in summertime, we say we have to raise fees. Nor did I like the fact, and I said this way back when Ambozzello and the whole crew, um, voted on the snow. Well, um, we got to a snowstorm, it was snowing outside and then you say we're going to charge fees so if you don't, um, um, uh, clean up right in front of your sidewalk. And that day, challenge sixteen was right out in front of my house and went over her house, she hadn't even got to her, it was snow yet, okay? It was just ridiculous. We were in the middle of a snowstorm and we say we're going to raise fees. That should have been done at budget time, not in the middle of a snowstorm. Okay? Same thing I have with it coming back this time and we were rushing a few weeks ago. Hey, what happens if we don't pass this bill tonight? Well, we have a snowstorm. All the needs we're talking about, we have the snowstorm going on, but we cannot enforce the bill because it has to take ten days to do it. Well, if you had worked on that during budget season, when the time came down for us to have the snow, because we all knew it was coming, it would have been okay. But to come back in snow season and we pass a bill to deal with this and we have to wait ten days before it can forthwhile it's snowing outside, you know, it just made us look really silly when I was watching on the station and I'm like, see, that should have been a budget issue. Same concern that I have with this. You know, those who say, well, I'm not keeping, I'm, um, making taxpayers pay our money. No, everybody's a taxpayer. I understand there's a process. And I don't want to see the code come up here in the summertime and ask for more money to cut grass. The police department come up here and ask for more money for removing illegal park cars on snow days who should have been on the, this north side versus south side versus this street versus one-way street and all this other kind of stuff. Okay? That can get crazy. And after we just done with sidewalks, personally, I haven't seen too many changes in, in neighborhoods just because we charge fees. I still see a lot of people who, who clean their sidewalks, still cleaning their sidewalks and, uh, people who didn't clean their sidewalks, I still see them. And personally, I don't know of anybody in my neighborhood who's gotten charged any kind of fees. That, that goes back to enforcement. Our job, to me, I would prefer, instead of you make this presentation, President Scott, that the people from code come up here and make the impression, say it's because it's their department and the people from the budget come up here and say, why we did not include this, why we did not do this in our budget planning? And then they come up and make that, uh, argument and then they, I would consider it better. But if every single department starts looking at their budget and starts coming up here and say, yep, we got unkept grass, we got unkept yards, we got a couple of this, we got this, what's the point of budget season? Oh, we need to raise more to, and all the animal control we did, we need to add more to those who don't, are not keeping their animals right. Here we come over there, we need to have that. We always can point out that the bad person is not doing the thing, we need to raise fees. I'm against that. I'm against not it because of the fact that we need to raise fees. I haven't seen it work yet, but, um, you didn't bring the data to show that it will reduce it, um, and then people say, well, that's not an issue. Well, if it's not an issue, why are we doing it? And then you say, well, we need the money, so we don't do it. Well, the budget is passed and we have a balanced budget. So that's why I cannot support that.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Should I make a motion?
Well, that, yeah, the council has.
I don't want to say a word, I just want to make a motion. Go ahead.
Councilmember Furley.
Chair, uh, I'd just say thank you to Tim and the administration. I think this has been a really good collaborative effort. Appreciate that this covers the cost, helps to fund adequate enforcement. Also appreciate that this ordinance doesn't penalize responsible property owners. If you're willing to work with code enforcement to improve your property, uh, it doesn't penalize you. I think that's great. Um, you know, speaking of the budget process, I, I think it's important for the administration to try to get things as accurate as possible. However, um, I don't think it's unreasonable to say that things do change, information changes and we can make adjustments throughout the year, whether it be to our budget, whether it be to our fee structure, up or down, uh, based on the best information we have at the given time. So completely supportive. Thank you.
Now, entertain a motion.
I'll move for a favorable recommendation of substitute fifty-nine fourteen.
Second.
As we move in second, it all, all in favor of the motion, may I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
This budget, I mean, this, um, substitute bill fifty-nine dash fourteen will be sent to the full council with a favorable, um, recommendation. Now, entertain a motion to rise and force to the.
Still move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion hears.
Welcome. Full council's back in session. Uh, John Boardy, would you give reading, third reading to bill fifty-nine fourteen, substitute bill?
Substitute bill. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending section six dash thirty-seven point one of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing vacant building maintenance and registration.
Motion to amend this, it wasn't the committee of the court. Some more.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion for passage?
Second.
All, John.
Um, hold on. Uh, Henry Davis.
Hold on, excuse me. That was, what happened?
Motion for passage.
Motion for passage.
I second it. You seconded, yes, I'm correct. I'm sorry. Um, I, 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 um, I'm reluctant in this. I, um.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Um, discussion is closed if you.
I'm not discussing anything. I'm not asking you by question, I'm talking to Henry. I can't support fee increases. I can't. Um, nay.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Um, Oliver Davis.
Nay.
Vice President Deere.
Derek says aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Of seven votes cast, five are ayes. Thank you, Mr. Boardy. Move to resolutions. Um, just like to say before, resolutions, this portion of the council meeting is where a common council hears bills filed, proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which bill was referred for advisory review and recommendation is given. Uh, if a proposed resolution is requested as zoning, a special exception, a report from the building department will first be given, followed by the petitioner who's given a formal presentation at the podium. If the proposed resolution includes a tax abatement, a report from the city community investment department will be given, followed by the petitioner giving the formal presentation at the podium. All other proposed resolutions, the formal presentation by the petitioner will be given immediately after the committee chairperson, chairperson's report. Following the formal presentation, council members may ask preliminary questions only within council comments, with common council comments being heard during the council portion. During the public portion, each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. Please give your name, address and comments on the bill. If you have questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during the rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by the opposition, then five-minute rebuttal, uh, period for the presenter of the bill. So, John Boardy, would you read the first resolution?
Fifteen oh-seven, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as forty-three fifteen South Lafayette Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-four, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement[1689.41] of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Horace Colzer LLC.
Do we have a committee report? Confirming?
Petition. Uh, community investment, do you have a report to give?
Thank you, councilmembers. Christopher Fielding from Department of Community Investment on 14th floor of this building. And before you have the confirming resolution, um, the five-year, on the five-year personal property tax payment for Horace Colzer, they're looking to spend approximately $1.5 million on new equipment to equip our new R&amp;D lab that'll be located here in South Bend to support the prosthetic and aesthetic dental industry globally. Um, total amount to be abated over a five-year period would be $53,811. Total amount of taxes to be paid on that equipment would be $54,514. And the company has committed to creating 10 new jobs at $23 per hour, uh, here in South Bend.
Presentations.
Great. Thank you. Um, do you help it?
And now, the petition.
For the petitioner? Oh, yes.
You supported us with your presentation, so you keep it in the wall. I know. You know.
Good evening.
Your name and, uh...
I'm Christopher Holden, I'm president of Horace Colzer. Uh, our address is stated as 4315 South Lafayette Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana 46614.
Just a brief synopsis.
So, as stated, we've, uh, we have an investment of 1.5 million that is going to a laboratory that is not just a research facility, but also, um, in addition to the manufacturing facility, so that we may produce prosthetics that are digitally manufactured, along with the proprietary process.
Hello? Okay. Thank you. Any comments or...? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anybody from the public wishing to speak on 1507? Anybody from the public, please come on the podium. Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against 1507, would you please come to the podium? Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council. Move for adoption. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No vote?
I'll call. Uh, Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Vice President Deere?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
And President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes?
1508.
A resolution confirming the adoption of declaratory...
Adopted.
Adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. 1508, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 5021 Nipps Parkway, South Bend, Indiana 46628, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a two-year real property tax abatement for the Foster Group LLC.
Yeah, thanks. You're welcome. Mr. Fielding?
Can we hear 1508 and 1509 together? Is that awesome?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Upon proper motion.
Second. So, before you and Oliver...
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Mr. Fielding?
I'll read 1509. A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 5021 Nipps Parkway, South Bend, Indiana 46628, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for MGE Wholesale Inc.
Now, Mr. Fielding?
Thank you. Um, the building you have before you is, the 5021 Nipps Parkway is the former bound printing building that sat empty for approximately three years, um, has certainly been subject to vandalism over the past. Um, the Foster Group is purchasing the building and looking to spend approximately $3.7 million over the next three years on the entire project, um, to become a national wholesale distribution center, um, operated and owned by MGE, at least to MGE Wholesale. Uh, they'll be creating 40 new jobs over those three years. Um, the total taxes to be abated under the real property tax abatement, under the state ordinance of the two-year vacant, uh, vacant building abatement, would be 100% the first year, 50% the second year. The maximum amount of abated, abatement would be $180,000 over the next two years. Um, they're looking to spend approximately $200,000 in new equipment to equip the insides of the building. Total taxes to be abated on the personal property would be $8,220 over five years, with $10,820 to be paid. And I know Mr. Foster is here, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Just a brief synopsis, please?
Hi, my name is Brad Foster, I'm the managing member of the Foster Group and president of MGE Wholesale. We're looking to improve the bound building and bring 40 jobs to South Bend. We're in the distribution of shooting sports products and we have customers all over the United States and also ship globally into eight countries. So, it's just an expansion of a business that we currently operate in Milwaukee and we just need the space and we've moved to South Bend to the bound building.
Thank you. Now, we'll open up to the public. All those speaking in favor, could you please come to the podium? Seeing none, all those speaking against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council. Move for adoption of 1508? Second. Mr. Boardy?
1508, uh, Mr. Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Vice President Deere?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
And President Scott?
Aye, thank you.
That would be seven ayes.
For adoption of 1509?
Second. Um, Vice President Deere?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis?
Aye.
And President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes?
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing? I just wanna point out that tonight you adopted tax abatements and attracted two companies there that are both national and global shippers, which is something that we need to attract more of to, more of in South Bend. So, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fielding. Mr. Boardy, 1510?
1510, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana approving a proposed lease for certain local public improvements, beginning between the South Bend Redevelopment Authority as lessor and the South Bend Redevelopment Commission as lessee. The issuance of lease rental revenue bonds by the South Bend Redevelopment Authority and other related matters.
Scott?
Good evening, council, Scott.
Sorry, can I have your report? Community investment met today and we send this forward favorably.
All right, now, Scott.
Pardon me, good evening, Commissioner, uh, Council, Scott Ford.
You understand.
Uh, Scott Ford, Executive Director of Community Investments. It is my pleasure tonight to speak to you on the topic of infrastructure and more specifically, one of the most impactful means that we have, uh, to improve the quality of life and the fortunes of the city. The topic of smart streets, or complete streets, if you will, are, uh, the purpose behind that is making a street, sort of not only the vehicles, but also the pedestrians, cyclists, transit riders, um, and commercial traffic, all of which is a street. Doing so in a manner that really maximizes, uh, the economic potential of some of our most important public space, the space between all of our buildings. Uh, when it's done in that manner, it will be, uh, it will help promote economic vitality, uh, help attract additional residents and businesses to the community. Um, it's a topic that has been, um, certainly in discussion in, at a high, at a high level in the community for well over, uh, 30 years. I include here a newspaper clipping from the South Bend Tribune, it says downtown counts on two-way streets to get going. Uh, this was pulled together by a number of community leaders in 1985. Um, so fortunately, we've had a very formal, more formal dialogue in the last two and a half years. Uh, it's been a thorough public process, including approval by, from this council in 13 and 14 to implement the initial phases of, of the Smart Streets Initiative. And now, we're up on really a big step, which is, uh, the final, um, step for the implementation. Uh, it's important to note that going forward, all this work is to be funded through the TIF and that, that funding is in place. Um, the means of funding will be a TIF-backed bond. Uh, that bond has been approved, uh, this January by the Redevelopment Commission and the Redevelopment Authority. And so, the, the action we're asking of council tonight is the approval of the lease between the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Commission. You'll see up here, uh, some images from the streetscape improvements along Jefferson, as well as, uh, some of the street trees being put in on Lafayette this fall. Again, to the public process, it's been, um, it's been, you know, intense. So, we are at our 28th public meeting today, um, and it's been a great opportunity for dialogue, uh, and to understand what, uh, where the better needs, uh, where the needs, how can we better calibrate this plan for our businesses and our residents. The bond itself is a $25 million bond and let me just pause there to say, uh, there are several advantages of pursuing the bond. Not the least of which is the fact that when you change a network, there are multiple components and the bond enables us to do that work at once, so that we're able to come online without, um, with minimizing any disruption. Uh, it also means that we're able to, uh, keep some funds available for, continue to promote economic development and invest in other quality of life, uh, measures through our TIF. Net proceeds are at around 21 and a half million. Uh, the term of the bond is 20 years, um, and when you look at the debt service coverage of the bond against the River West Development Area, revenues are fairly strong. So, you're looking at somewhere coverage ratio of 3.25 to 11.23 percent. Um, just to put that in comparison, you typically look for 1.25 to 1.5 for debt coverage ratio. So, we're in particularly strong position, uh, to cover these payments. Uh, the bond proceeds will be used to, um, to deliver the full two-way conversion, which includes things like signal work, science, striping, engineering, uh, very limited property acquisition at, you know, if there's an issue at the intersection, um, as well as the roundabouts at Bartlett and Marion, uh, street repaving, curb and sidewalk, um, repairs, as well as corridor striping and streetscape, particularly along Western Avenue. It's important to note that these funds, these elements are gonna be funded through this, this TIF bond. Some of these, a number of these would have, had to been funded through the city and through the civil city. And so, by doing this, we're opening up more funds available in the streets budget in the future for additional work. In terms of the schedule, uh, again, it's, uh, on the 15th, the commission, uh, met and approved to initiate the bond, um, and then the authority met and to approve the resolution. Again, at a public hearing on the 29th, the commission, uh, approved the formal lease. Um, we're here this evening asking for approval of that lease. Uh, pursuant to approval, uh, bond proceeds will be available in early April. Um, just a reminder of where we are in terms of tangible delivery. Uh, in 2014, concept really was to pilot, you had a sense of, get, um, implement a few improvements and see how the network responded, you know, distill any lessons learned from the city. Um, we made improvements along Jefferson, Lafayette, and William, uh, keep in touch with a number of the business owners along those streets. Say, a number of them that were neutral on the idea at best have, um, have become champions of it and it indicated that their business has gone up, at least at, at two particular businesses. Um, 20, uh, this year, we call it phase two. Uh, really, it's about preparing the network for that conversion. So, making, uh, the additional improvements to Marion and Madison, uh, as well as Bartlett to help, uh, prepare the network, as well as, uh, a continuation of the West Side Main Streets Plan, uh, the improvements to Lincoln Way and Western, which were a topic of discussion this fall. And then, uh, phase three, uh, the full implementation, that involves the signal conversion at Mayan Michigan and St. Joe, uh, as well as, um, the improvements at Bartlett, Marion, and Chippewa. Uh, in terms of measuring our progress, it's important to look at, see how we're doing on these things. Uh, you know, national studies suggest, you know, example of a community like Louisville, uh, property taxes went up around, or property values went up around 39 percent, uh, the three years after their, uh, after their improvements. Uh, throughout the city of New York, cities that have, uh, made these improvements, the communities, uh, recognize much higher retail sales. So, much that same way, we're tracking, uh, on all the parcels, um, that about these streets to look at how they're doing for both property values, vacancies, retail sales, as well as pedestrian vehicular accidents. Um, and just to, to close, you know, vibrant urbanism is economic development. This is, uh, perhaps one of the, single-handedly, one of the most impactful things that we can do to improve the quality of life and economic development in our city. Uh, and with that, I'm grateful for your continued support.
Thank you. Any questions? Oliver?
Yes. Um, could you highlight, um, the role that the state has? I know Parks of Michigan's, well, really all of Michigan Street, um, is, um, owned by the state. And, um, highlight their role in terms of, in funding this, um, what has been, um, their communication with you? Uh, you and I talked about that and the strength of them being committed to this project, given their, sometimes, the state's history with St. Joe County.
Absolutely. So, the question is about what's the role of Endotness Project?
There we go.
Uh, and with that, I'd like to invite Eric Orvath, uh, who really has been the point person in the conversations with Orvath, come up here, Director of, uh, Public Works. I'd say we've been in, and we're, we're remaining in negotiations with Endot, um, and we've had several, uh, several good meetings at the highest level. They're, they're very supportive of the project and, and the principals behind it. But you get to some of the details here, I'll turn over to Eric.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, as Scott said, uh, we, what's that?
Name.
Uh, I'm sorry. You know, I'm the Orvath, Public Works Director, 13th floor of this building. Um, as Scott had mentioned, we've been in negotiations with Endot. Uh, they continue, along with Metcog and others, to be very supportive of the project moving forward, um, to see the value in it, uh, for the city. And, um, and so, uh, you know, they continue to come to the table and try, in terms of, wanting to see this project move forward. We're not at the point yet where we've got, um, negotiations finalized and, um, but they have allowed us to do, uh, the work by permit and continue to move that forward and, um, are participating in design meetings so that, uh, we know that, uh, what we end up with in terms of design will meet the needs of Endot. And so, um...
Do you see any hiccups coming in that process? And how long do you think that process will be before we can get some more final teeth with Endot regarding, and sitting down to crystallize everything regarding this project? Get with our time schedule?
So, the, the timing issue is, is a difficult one. We hope to have it, uh, done by the end of the year, but it is a difficult, um, process.
End of the, by December?
Yes.
Okay. Continue.
And, um, and so, you know, we'll continue to push that, um, and, uh, you know, all I can say is that they've been, um, very, very open to being at the table and, uh, and willing to meet and sit down and, and it's just a matter of coming up with, uh, final agreement that is a win-win for the state and for the city.
And, and my question to you, I know, Scott, has there been other similar situations where Endot has worked with other cities that have had this kind of success on this kind of a project and what's been their track record recently?
Um, yeah, uh, so, Endot, um, has been in the mode of, uh, in, in a lot of cities, um, of getting out of cities, uh, and, and having their state routes, um, try to be around cities as much as possible. Um, and so, jurisdiction transfers are not uncommon. It's also not uncommon, um, to see work by permit where, uh, locals wanna have certain things done on state routes and they're allowed to do it, um, by permit. And so, both of those are options, um, that we're, that we're pursuing with them and both are things that have happened in many different cities all over, all over the state.
And the final question on that, Endot issue, down the road, do you, um, in your negotiations, are you talking about issues where they would, um, also provide funding in terms of the upkeep, um, of these roads, where Endot would play a part of their monies with that, since they are, in a sense, um, state roads, some parts of this are? What role of upkeep in the future are you talking about in terms of transportation issues as we look at all this? Because it's not just putting it in now, but down the road. I mean, every time you do transportation projects, we gotta look at what we're doing currently and where we are five, 20, 30 years down the road. What is the future in terms of setting up, um, a repair, restructure, I mean, anything into, in terms of upgrades that will be down there? What kind of talks are you having with them and how is it going?
Yeah, that's absolutely part of the dialogue. And a lot of it will be dependent on, uh, whether we, uh, transfer jurisdiction to the city or not, uh, under the, the mode of keeping it, uh, in state and doing it by permit, the state would still be responsible for ongoing, uh, operation and maintenance. Um, if, uh, if part of this is transferred to the city, um, part of that transfer agreement would include, uh, provisions for which we would have money that, um, would essentially be an equivalent amount of operation and maintenance funding, um, for a period of certain number of years.
Do they do a percentage of how much the state and city?
I'm sorry?
Do they, like, do a percentage? How much would be the state, would be responsible, the city would be responsible?
So, um, what they would do on, uh, typical jurisdiction transfers, it would be, uh, So what they would do on typical jurisdiction transfers, it would be, the state would typically offer about 10 years worth of operation maintenance costs that they would have on the road as a settlement for you taking it over.
All right. Thanks for sharing that. I'm good.
Thank you.
Derek Dieter?
No.
Kevin? Karen?
Scott, thank you for your presentation. What was South Bend's economy like in 1985?
South Bend's economy in 1985?
Yeah.
Well, I don't have the figures in hand in terms of what the unemployment rate were, you know, at that point in history. I know that thematically, the city was still sort of recovering in a post-industrial phase. And so it was still primarily, you know, industrial, you know, manufacturing based. And I'm not sure specifically what you'd like to know.
Who were our major employers at the time?
I can only ask for the guess because I don't have those figures in front of me, but I would guess if I, the Hospital Memorial Hospital, as well as, you know, within the county, you look at the University of Notre Dame. And perhaps, you know, one of our banks, that First Source Bank.
No, sir. We had the index here. There was some other spinoffs. I can't remember the one on sample. We're giving you a second length, it's out there. So we had some major employers. But do you know what the population was?
I don't have that figure on hand, no.
Okay.
Above 100,000.
The reason why I asked that, because when we're dealing with statistical information, given 1985 newspaper article that you were suggesting, I think that we need to pay attention to what the landscape was when folks were calling for two-way streets. 1985 is a long way off from 2015. It's a lifetime. So I want to be able to compare these things and what apples are apples, not apples and My question at this point is, why is this a priority?
Why is the smart streets a priority? Well, I appreciate that question. I think it's probably one of the strongest ways to improve economic development, address pedestrian safety and improve the functioning of the network. So in a community like Louisville, which had a very similar downtown situation with a one-way couple of bisecting downtown, they saw that not only did property values increase by 39%, pedestrian auto collisions declined by 60%. While the crime in the city of Louisville had risen by, between 2011, 2013, the streets that were converted to two-way, crime dropped by 23%. Auto theft decreased by 33%. Robbery declined by 42%. Parcels along the two-way streets generated twice the property taxes of the average one-way block. So we understand that that's just one community, but if you look across the states, you look at, say like New York, they've got a number of streets in, in the outer boroughs, in urban contexts, not unlike our own. And in each instance, when some improvements were made, they, you saw an increase in retail sales, for example. So it's safer for pedestrians. It helps improve the network. You have, you know, by a factor, fewer left turns to be made on a two-way network. But most importantly, it's one of the strongest investments we can make to improve economic development and remove an obstacle to investment.
So $25 million is a lot of money. It's an enormous amount of money, one project. What are we going to do to try to retain some of those dollars here locally?
Well, you can answer, it's a great question. And certainly, the size is considerable. It's also, when looked at infrastructure projects, though, it puts it in context. My understanding is a tunnel project going on north of Angela is in the magnitude of 90 million, right? They, and we're looking at improvements to about 15 miles worth of roads. If property values increased by only 30% just along Main and Michigan, for example, we would recoup an additional $5 million, $4 million in the next five years for taxes. That is just to say that by increasing the revenues and promoting until development, which is the most, the most fiscally sound way that we can grow as a city, that'll have a positive impact. As well as when we look at how these dollars are bid out, we have a local bidder's ordinance that goes through the Board of Public Works that helps in terms of contract and making sure that those contractors that are based in South Bend or employed, their employees in South Bend have an opportunity, preferential opportunity in bidding.
How does this work with Eighty Street Commons?
Well, that's a great point. Eighty Street Commons is a great example. It commands some of the highest rents in the region. And one would argue that as new construction, yet it emulates the principles that we're trying to, to recapture on Main and Michigan, right? So you have parallel parking, you have a mixture of uses. You've got vestriance scale, vestri amenities and street skates. And it's arguably because of those amenities that it is one of the most attractive places for office rents and commercial rents in the, in the region. So much the same way, we'd anticipate similar forms of development happening when we're able to make those improvements to the public realm.
My last question. Why not this type of infusion in dollars into the neighborhoods? We have, it's $25 million. We're putting up the house on this one. We hope that it works out. I hope that it does work out. But why not the neighborhoods where we have the most decay, the worst sidewalks, the worst curves, the worst streets? We have people living there every day, walking in and out of there, school buses accessing those areas. And we're concentrating on the street that right now doesn't look that bad. Why not our neighborhoods? Why, why does this become a priority over where the people that we serve are at and the housing that we pull tax dollars off or property tax dollars to operate the city are coming from? That's where our investment, I would think, should come from. But why are we not spending this aggressive amount, this enormous amount in our neighborhoods versus the street?
Well, we are. So if you look at the areas between Lincoln Way West and Western, those are two of the core areas to be addressed, as well as Main and Michigan. All of that are, those are common paths that everyone in the adjacent neighborhoods travel on a daily basis. And so by making the improvements there, that's part of a portfolio of policies that we're working on to help improve the neighborhoods. And this is but one thing. It's not taking precedent over them, but it's a key component of it. Secondly, and I'd also argue that what we're doing here is really representing principles that are, are common sense principles, I go back for literally thousands of years of how streets ought to operate. So I would not posit that this is a particularly risky venture. We're looking at converting streets from one-way to two-way, way that they were originally, way that they were when the city was, frankly, had a larger population and was doing better economically. And we're going back to that. So it is, it is pretty common sense.
Well, see, that's why I asked that question earlier about 1985 and we're doing economically better. And I want to make sure at this point it's clear. That is the reason why I asked that question. Because if we're trying to graduate back to what it looked like in 1985 or prior to that time, then why are we reducing our capacity to grow as a city by knocking all our houses down? We can't get back to that point if we need the population to get to that point. It doesn't make sense. So, you know, how much the percentage of dollars that are being spent right now for this side of the project versus the west side of the project, when we're talking about Lincoln Way and Western, where the neighborhoods are at? What is the percentage being spent versus one versus the other?
Well, I believe upwards of $2 million is being spent on Western. Additional million and a half was spent on Lincoln Way initially, and then there's going to be more to come. A big part of the expansion, so, and a big part of the expansion of the TIF that was approved by this council in December was to geographically expand it along Lincoln Way West and Western to allow for additional investments to be made in those neighborhoods.
I'm fine with that. That came from over here, the second district, okay? I know what happened with that. But what I'm saying is you're telling me that only $3.5 million, $25 million is only going to go to the neighborhoods and the rest is going to go to what we're looking at right now. That's what you're saying.
I think you do a disservice to the residents along Main and Michigan and the neighborhoods. They occupy the several miles south that would be beneficiaries of that as well. I listed numbers from Lincoln Way and, and Western. It's about 10 and a half all in for the full length of Main and Michigan. And that's going to have a tremendous cause of impact.
10 and a half of what?
Million for the signals typing and conversions along Main and Michigan between Chippewa and Bartlett. So a lot of folks that live off in those neighborhoods, off viewing and off a sample and other places, that will benefit from this.
Yeah, but their neighborhoods are not decaying. The work, the impetus of this is to make sure the areas that need the investment are getting the investment. I don't get where Bartlett Street and the streets going north on Michigan Street need that extra investment. Their property values are extremely high over there. They have nice looking neighborhoods. They don't have these troubles that the Johnson Streets have, or the Olive Streets have, or, or the Sheridan Streets will have. They don't have those issues. They don't have the issues that the Mead Street will have off of Lincoln Way. They don't have those economic issues. So what is the justification for spending the money where it doesn't necessarily need to be spent at versus where it needs to be spent at?
You down, Tom?
I'd say to improve pedestrian safety, improve network connectivity and improve economic development.
Thank you, sir.
Josh Burke?
I'll move for that. We're in a public hearing.
Thank you. Just one last thing. For those who live in the far west or the far east or the far north or the far south, what would be your biggest argument to say to them why this is important to them because of the fact that, I realize a part of six districts does cover these areas, which I'm very thankful for, okay? But how do I then say to those who live further west, why this is important to them when they would say, we're only taking care of this part of the district and not that part of it? What would you tell me to tell them?
Well, we're one body, one city. And I think if we're stronger, particularly if you think about downtown as the heart and if you have a strong downtown, if you go to another community and you see a postcard, what's that postcard of, right? What's that image of? That is the lasting image people have. It's a shared image in the community, first and foremost, that it's a resource for everybody. It's a place for everybody. Secondly, as we do better economically, that benefits the entire city. That's more jobs, that ultimately will lead to lower tax rates and there's a, there's a shared benefit as well. And, you know, it increases the quality of life for everyone throughout the city.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Now we'll turn to the public portion. I will ask Vice President Derek Dieter to time the speakers. You have five minutes each. Those speaking in favor of this resolution, please step forward to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record and Derek Dieter will time you.
My name is Daniel Jones. I live at 1032 Georgiana. My office is just next door, President of Business Development Corporation at 218 West Washington. And I would point out the Hebert Tower, not the Chase Tower. The information and research that's done is very compelling. But for college and for Miss Pettenhurst in Granger, I've been a South Bend resident since my birth in 1945, and I support this resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Hocken, Director of Northeast Neighborhood Redevelopment for the University of Notre Dame, 415 Main Building, Notre Dame, Indiana. The university does not reside downtown or even within the city limits of South Bend. Nevertheless, we recognize the importance of a vibrant, vital, economically viable downtown. We believe smart streets is the single biggest step that the city could take in that direction and that the TIF funding that makes that happen is the, is the single best way to do that. So we support this resolution.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you. My name is Dan Lewis. I live at 853 Soren Street. I moved to South Bend about four years ago and I did my graduate school program at Notre Dame, but it's since been a start of my career here in the downtown community of South Bend. I've been able to witness a forward, a physical progressive change that, it looks like night and day from when I moved here. And that forward progressive change is part of what makes me want to keep my career here. So I support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jatin Kane with the Office of Community Investment. Office is on the 14th floor of this building. I'm here to read a letter our office received from James Turnwall. He's the Executive Director of MACOG Michiana Area Council of Governments, and he sent a letter in support of this initiative, which I'd like to read. Dear members of the South Bend Common Council, this letter is in support of the City of South Bend's Smart Streets and West Side Corridors Revitalization Plan. MACOG is a regional intergovernmental agency established to foster cooperative, coordinated and comprehensive planning activities that focus on areas of interlocal importance such as transportation. These plans go hand in hand with MACOG's Long Range Transportation Plan. The Long Range Transportation Plan promotes transportation improvements for all modes of transportation, including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists and Transit Riders. A successful and thriving downtown starts with the promotion of safer access for all users. The plan incorporates the use of roundabouts throughout the downtown. Roundabouts, when compared to traditional intersections, allow for slower vehicle speeds, improved circulation and the reduction of conflict points. By reducing speeds and conflict points, it allows for safer passage of all users into and around the city and downtown. The U.S. Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration have identified roundabouts as proven safety countermeasures because their safety benefits have been shown to occur in urban and rural areas under a wide range of traffic conditions. And ongoing research has expanded our collective knowledge on their safety performance. Additionally, these two plans will use existing transportation routes and improve upon them through one-way to two-way street conversions, road diets, well-defined street parking, better access for buses and enhanced bicycle facilities. By making improvements to what already exists, it allows for improved connection of the downtown core with the rest of the city. The classic roadway configuration, commonly referred to as a road diet, is also identified by U.S. Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration as a proven safety countermeasure. The reduction of lanes allows the roadway to be reallocated for other uses such as bike lanes, pedestrian crossings, islands and/or parking. Road diets have multiple safety and operational benefits for the vehicles as well as pedestrians, bicyclists and transit riders. In closing, MACOG is enthusiastic about the Smart Streets and West Side Revitalization Plan fits into transportation network and MACOG's Long Range Transportation Plan. I would like to thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of the City of South Bend's Smart Streets and West Side Corridors Revitalization Plan. James was unable to be here as he's in an annual policy conversation in Washington, D.C. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If you would be so kind as to email a copy of that to the city clerk so they can put it in verbatim to the record.
Email it to Kareem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Matthew Coats. I live at 615 Portage Avenue, Apartment B. I spent my college career at Notre Dame. I grew up in Ohio and to be honest, I spent my college career thinking I was going to go back to Ohio. And in no small part would I say that the Smart Streets project helped keep me here. The decision to start your career anywhere is, it's really scary. And Smart Streets doing what it did to the city helped me feel really secure in starting my career here and staying here. So I support the Smart Streets program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Wine. I reside at 853 East Soren Street, Suite E. I come to the council tonight not as a transportation engineer. I'm actually classically trained in biological sciences, but I'm actually a young professional who stayed here. But what I can recognize with that background, this city and anything that we do about it is affecting a living, breathing thing, very much like a biological organism. I think that all of the economic metrics that have been proven by this or in other cities in terms of reducing health disparity, improving public safety and cultivating a better economy is going to help that living, breathing thing grow and evolve. And I'm going to look to our leadership, both in the administration and the actual council, to invest in our city as something that can continue to grow as a living, breathing entity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Willow Weatherall and I reside at 1741 Wall Street. And I'm here to speak in support of the Smart Streets Initiative. And I'm particularly pleased as well with the funding that will be provided for the Lincoln Way West and Western Avenue corridors. I'm very active in South Bend revitalization. I've been here for 14 years and South Bend has changed tremendously since my time here. I originally moved here to do a one-year master's at Notre Dame in International Peace Studies. And 14 years, three children, a minivan, later, here I am with a house in the Sunny Mead River Park area, which me and my three children love very much. A lot of my revitalization efforts have focused on bringing young professionals downtown and creating events that support cultural vitality. But one series of events that I did was probably the most meaningful to me was a series of summer camps called I Love South Bend. I love the city of South Bend summer camps. And what we did basically is we brought children downtown to experience the city in a completely new way. And the thing that I loved about walking downtown with the children and stopping in at many of the different businesses and recreation areas and creating very unique experiences for them was that they gained a new sense of civic pride and ownership of the city. And when they go downtown now, they, they recognize the city as their home. It doesn't matter what neighborhood you live in, the investments that we're making in downtown South Bend belong to everyone. The downtown is, is everyone's heart of the city. And I think about long-term, decades from now, the changes in investments that we make, those, those children will reap rewards. And maybe I'll retire here and die here, but who knows? Those children are growing up here and are being our next leaders. And I really support this initiative and the type of future that it will allow for economic development and for them to continue to enjoy a vibrant downtown, a growing downtown one where they can walk and play and work and maybe reside for the future. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Lex Dennis. I live at 853 East Soren Street. I live at 853 East Soren Street. Thank the opportunity to speak today. As a young professional, I mean, I've been here for six years now and echo a lot of sentiments today when I say that the progress has been very exciting for me. And anything that builds up the downtown, I'm very interested in, particularly in the matters of public safety, investment through businesses, and just making it a better place to live, work, and play. And so I'm very supportive of this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
John Farrell, 330 East Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. I'm here really as an employer. Crowe Moroth is a large employer in town and the edge of downtown. As you've heard from a number of young people here, our biggest challenge is recruiting, trying to get people to this area. One of the big challenges is trying to understand what the city has to offer. The Smart Street program has been one thing we've been able to offer to young folks as we've been talking to them. They've been very excited about it. We see this as being part of helping the whole city improve. Also see that now we started this, Jefferson looks great, that doing this in the next couple of years with this bond would be the right thing to continue the momentum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi. I'm Amy Visslato. I live at 304 South Twickenham.
A little louder, please.
Okay. I'm the only one that this microphone's calibrated for highways. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and voice my support for this initiative. Truly is a smart initiative and I want to thank everyone who's been involved in formulating these plans over the last several months, years probably, in fact, if we can even look back to when it was initially suggested. I've been part of several of those 27 public meetings and focus groups and so I've seen how thoughtfully and thoroughly this process has involved and I'm grateful for that as a citizen of South Bend and a resident and a small business owner and someone who also wants to retain and grow that business and bring more people here and grow my family here and maybe retire here. It's a wonderful community and I would just like to reinforce some of the things that have been said already tonight, that this is our city. It's one city. It's one body. Without a strong center, we will never be able to overcome the issues that we have along the arteries and at the edges. And so I think it's really important for us to focus on the potential for this to reconnect all of us and to strengthen our core, which is so important in any organism, any body, any city. I think we would be hard-pressed to find a successful city, a city that's thriving, that has two four-lane highways, two blocks apart with cars ripping 55 miles an hour in either direction. I think it would be really important for us to think about how we can forge a pathway forward for a brighter future, even brighter future for our city with the current infrastructure that we have in place. So, thank you very much and again, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you.
Evening, Council. Aaron Perry, Executive Director, Downtown South Bend, 217 South Michigan. Certainly appreciative of the council's efforts on this particular topic and over the past decade or more on supporting many of these programs that have been piloted in and around the downtown area. You're familiar with the ambassador program, the landscaping that we've done in and around downtown, the bike rack program, facade grants, some of the things we've done with parking and streetscaping, flags, banners, and benches. Those are things that have really evolved downtown over the past decade into a place that is ripe for investment, a place that we were just able to announce at the end of last year has experienced over 80% occupancy rate in our retail storefront, numbers that we haven't seen in the better part of a decade. It's because of these types of investments.
A little louder, please.
Sure. It's these types of investments in the streetscape, in the public realm, that have made those types of things possible. Matter of fact, those types of investments have made me want to purchase a home in downtown when I'm a residential property owner. The thing I stand before you to mention is that we have become a proving ground for those elements and our organization stands ready to become a resource for other areas of town that introduce things such as the ambassador program, grants, landscaping, streetscaping, things of that nature. So, pleased to be before you to tell you, once again, your efforts have paid off and I'm looking forward to working with you on the next steps.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. George Garner. I reside at 112 Franklin Place. I've been proud to live and work in the second district for about 10 years now. But before that, I was in some of those other cities that are a little further ahead of where we are. And it's unquestionable, having driven, walked, and biked in second district and downtown for many of those years, I think it's high time our transportation network stops becoming a barrier to those who want to work and play and enjoy the city. It's been a barrier for way too long and bringing it to a transportation network that I've seen in those other cities that are further ahead, that have better downtowns, that have more economic revitalization, this is an absolute must for our city. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Christopher Barth. I reside at 236 Tonti Street in South Bend, Indiana. I would also like to voice my support for the Smart Streets program. I have some family friends that live in the Louisville, Kentucky community and they have spoken highly about the changing in the streets and what it can do for economic vitality. And so I look forward not only to the streets obviously making this transition, but all of the tax revenue that can result from it and expand into our neighborhoods, making it even stronger. So, thank you very much.
My name is Karen Hawn. I live at 50727 Sean Gort. And I'm also part of the Bike Michiana Coalition. We organize Bike Rise and Bike to Work Week in this area and we have bike safety classes for third graders in schools. We fit them with bike helmets. And we're in favor of Smart Streets. This will give us the opportunity to have more people safely get on bicycles. Right now, if you ride on Michigan, you know, if you have to cross four lanes of traffic, that's pretty scary. And I think the West Side corridors will be greatly improved by this. I was a bike commuter for a long time and still am and I wouldn't ride on Lincoln Way. I would ride on Vassar until Vassar would dead-end at Olive and then I would take Olive South and that worked out. But I couldn't go any farther. I mean, I couldn't go back to the airport. And I think when the South Shore allows bicycles to be on the train, I think you're going to see a lot of people that are going to ride their bikes down Lincoln Way to get on the train, go to Chicago, and then back. So, we're in favor of this.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mark Neal, Office is 112 West Jefferson Boulevard. A pleasure to be with you this evening and to speak in favor of this resolution. I think we all share a great plan and vision for this city in which we talk about creating a sense of place in which people want to live, work, play, and invest. I think this Smart Streets initiative with the main streets, the fact that we are touching literally miles of our corridors, Michigan Street, Main Street, Lincoln Way, and Western Avenue with this project is going to make a tremendous infrastructure, investment in infrastructure, which we will see great returns from. The fact it's being done through the TIF, which is clearly our most financially stable funds at this point in time and while still under strong demand, allows us to readily handle the financial burden on an annual basis that this bond will represent and would strongly encourage you, as we share that vision, that you vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last one for speaking for.
Hi. My name is Matt Gray. I work at Key Bank, 202 South Michigan Street, downtown South Bend. I worked at the bank for 25 years. I've been active in the community and seen tremendous progress in the downtown and I see the Smart Streets continuing to help the city progress in that direction and based on the information for both demographic and economic, I support the Smart Streets initiative. I hope you all support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now those wishing... Twenty-three minutes. How much? Twenty-three? That's what I said. Twenty-three minutes. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Those speaking against this resolution, there's a total for everyone, 23 minutes. You have five minutes each. Your name and address, sir, for their effort.
I am S.J. Sabo. I reside on Michuaca Avenue in South Bend. This proposal brings to mind the King's New Clothes more than anything else. Mr. Scott's opening Hurricane IV spin is typical of the misinformation and disinformation about this plan. Two-way streets is not the same as two-lane streets. We have no historical precedent of two-lane streets. It is about, if it was about two-way streets downtown, then mission is accomplished now and there's no reason to spend $25 million on the mayor's reelection campaign. Eddie Street Commons is given as an example of how this clog arterial to work, but it doesn't have to flow the traffic that a downtown does. The example we should be looking to is Edison Lakes with its four-lane streets, moving traffic efficiently, getting people to and from work. The plan it would finance has been bulldozed through every level of approval as a pig in a poke sold on the basis of deliberate disinformation regarding the project's scope and cost through every step of the way. This dam the torpedoes approach was clear from the initial public meetings where discussion and dissension was vigorously squelched by the presenters and the administration. No one was allowed to present an alternative view of this plan or an alternative direction for it. It was going to be what it was going to be right from the start and everything else has just been going through the formalities. It is a plan of form before function based on a mistaken belief that a central business district can be built of first-floor shops and residential projects and clogged streets. In truth, every working city in the world exists and grows because of what happens above the first floor. And as history and current examples clearly demonstrate, this activity cannot thrive on two-lane streets. As further proof of the monumentally poor judgment embodied by this plan, one has only to look to the proposed roundabouts. The Department of Transportation makes clear that using this configured roundabout in this configuration or in this situation is beyond ill-advised. Department of Transportation, the administration and the out-of-town group group, poo-poo the DOT, but frankly, I believe in what they tell me. The roundabout is the most pedestrian, hostile intersection known to man. And we have four of them studded through this plan because it's sheeshy, it's trendy, and it's now. I'm sorry, lost my place here, folks. Not only does this Smart Streets program not enhance revitalization of the central business district, in fact, it acts to inhibit growth of business above the first floor downtown, that vital business above the first floor downtown that makes the downtown what it is, more than just a shopping center with a lot of parking. Downsizing our important thoroughfares, including Lincoln Way and Western Avenue, and that's what we're doing. We're downsizing everything. And the downtown street seals our fate as a tiny town trapped by uninformed and wrong-headed thinking and a short-sighted vision of the future.
Yeah. Thirty seconds, sir.
The only thing evident in this program is the mayor's desire to be re-elected regardless of what it costs the citizens of this city.
Thank you. Next.
Hi. Dan Mullis, 632 South 28th Street. I have a major problem with this, but first I want to touch on the Louisville situation that Mr. Ford brought up. Louisville, back a few years ago, got a huge contract in the Ford plant, one of the most hottest suddenly car shows ever. So, when that car comes into the production line, they put in two new shifts in that building, hundreds upon hundreds of jobs, money flowing through that economy. We don't have it here. We don't have anything close to that here. So, for doing this, you're not going to see Louisville because we're not Louisville. What I see here in the South Gateway, because in the last year and a half, I've learned a lot. The South Gateway seems to get a whole lot of money from the city. It's amazing the amount of money that goes into that stretch. I know a business on that stretch, a corporation that just one of their businesses brings in 20 to 50 million a year, okay? I think that road's going pretty good. When you have a business making 20 to 50 million a year, just one of their divisions, I think they're going really well. Look over where Mr. Davis set out off the western in those neighborhoods. That's rough out there. You're starting a business out out there. I don't think they're coming close to what anybody's making right there. And you want to put 22 more million into that stretch to make those suit and ties happy? You know? That's why we continue to take a step back. That's why Louisville's taking multiple steps forward.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Mark Pasecki. I reside at 101 North Conestoga Lane in South Bend, Indiana. I was born, raised here and have spent a good portion of my life in South Bend. I like roundabouts, however, I don't like this project or I'm concerned about the project principally because the city has done a lot of these big-dollar signature projects in the past in attempts to revitalize the downtown area, redevelop it. For instance, in 1971, South Bend was in the midst of an extensive urban renewal project, including the central downtown project. This project demolished essentially the center of the city and put up a parking lot. Many people said at the time that the character of the downtown was lost when these older buildings were torn down. However, in its 1971 annual report, the Department of Redevelopment said, "South Bend is well on its way to becoming the urban center of Michiana." That was 1971. In its 1972 annual report, the Department of Redevelopment said, "Towards the end of the year, there was indication that a sizable portion of the remaining central business district was being very, very seriously considered by a major redeveloper. There is every reason to believe that downtown South Bend would be a phenomenal success with a vitality attributed to the city's vault." They didn't specify what city they were referring to. In 1973, the city began construction of the River Bend Plaza. That was the downtown mall. It ran from Western Avenue north on Michigan Street. In its 1973 annual report, the Department of Redevelopment noted, "With the accomplishments of the past and the positive planning for the future, South Bend is developing one of the best track records in the nation and will truly be a better place to live and work." Unfortunately, in 1986, the city demolished River Bend Plaza. In an article in April of that year, the South Bend Tribune reported that Michigan Street was going to be restored to its status as a two-lane street with parking spaces, street lamps, and traffic signals. Gone will be the shade trees, protective canopies, cool fountains, restful benches, eye-catching sculptures, and brick paving. In their place will be concrete pavement, sidewalks, and if redevelopment is correct, more retail stores. Of course, that didn't happen. There have been other development projects aimed at bringing jobs and vitality to South Bend, the College Football Hall of Fame. The College Football Hall of Fame and Black Thorn Golf Course are a couple of examples. Also, extensive reworking of Lincoln Way West was done in about the year 2000, and work has been done on Western Avenue with streetlights, the Walnut and Western Underpass and Crop Center and 401's Field. A lot of work and taxpayer money has been spent in futile efforts to revitalize South Bend. I feel the smart street projects is a $38 million gamble that will not pay off. It is a cosmetic fix that does not address the root causes, the lack of vitality in South Bend. The money would be better spent keeping our streets in good repair and ensuring the city is safe and clean. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sheriff Benicki. I reside at 3822 Ford Street. These are anything but smart streets. These are planned congestion. My family and friends will not come downtown. Anybody that works downtown hates it. There's no flow to it. If you have been from Mayflower to Lafayette on Western Avenue, you can tell that three different divisions of DOT have planned it. At Weston and Olive, you go from two lanes down to one lane, and those cars that try to do that second lane end up on a curb that shouldn't be there. Then you get down to Walnut and the Viaduct, and that's another mess because nobody realized you have to turn right to go left, so all those barricades, cars end up on that. There is no flow, no continuity. I can spend three nights from Scott Street to Lafayette trying to get to work in the morning, and you only want to give $1 million to fix Western Avenue and 25 million, 20 million for streets that go to nowhere, there's no businesses, there's no places for people to go. We've got the empty Hall of Shame, you know? Where else are they gonna go down here? They come to the county city building, they've only got an hour to get in and out before the downtown greeters leave that orange greeting card on their window. The restaurants, everything's closing at night. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Public portion's closed. Mr. Ford, would you like to, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to address, several good points were made. I'd like to address specifically the notion that this somehow may be a gimmick, following on the heels of some of the efforts for urban renewal, and that more importantly about this traffic congestion, I think that that's particularly important to set the record straight there. First and foremost, this is anything but a gimmick. It's definitely not a silver bullet. This is about getting the fundamentals right. If you were to contrast any of those proposals that were made in the 60s and 70s as part of urban renewal, they were well-intended, but they were attempting to change the way that people behave, and this is going the opposite. This is leveraging 4,000 years of best practices of how cities generally operate. So, I posit that this is not a gimmick, this is going back to fundamentals. It's not a silver bullet, it's not expecting this is gonna completely ravishly change everything, it's just getting the fundamentals right so that we can succeed as a city. In terms of traffic counts, I think it's really important to point this out, that there was an original plan, an aesthetic plan that was developed through extensive public process, but then we vetted it through some rigorous traffic modeling. And so, this took into account not only traffic counts, but also information from, pulled from the metadata of everyone's phones, the same way that, for example, if you look at Google Maps, they can tell you where congestion is, it pulls that same information. And based on that, and I apologize, it's hard to see for some folks, it's a little washed out, but this light blue is level of service A and B. Green is level of service C, yellow D, sort of beige E, and then red half. This is the downtown network, you're looking north is to the right, and there's MLK, here's, you've got Michigan and Maine. And what you'll notice here, after the two-way conversion, that we predominantly are at a level of service A. That is a highway level of service in terms of, you know, potential congestion at an intersection. So, this will not disrupt traffic, and this was modeled through a variety of scenarios. So, in the future traffic domain, this will fully accommodate the work to be had. But it's also important, I want to highlight something else, that where the numbers pointed to something else, we were open to that. So, on Lafayette or LaSalle Street, initially, we looked at a tighter section running between Michigan and Lafayette. The model did not support that, the information didn't support that, and in order to make sure that we don't have that congestion that is causing some of these concerns, we revised the concept and went with the wider section. So, we've made those changes throughout the plan to recognize that, to make sure that we maintain a high level of service. So, this not only serves all the aesthetic reasons, but it also functionally serves our community well.
Okay, thank you. We'll have comments from council? No, sorry. Public portion is over. You need to sit down, sir. Sit down. No. Thank you. We'll have comments from council, we'll start with Karen White. Karen?
Negative.
Over.
Yeah. I would like to thank everybody who spoke tonight. This is a very interesting situation. I'm part of the district, the sixth district, it helps so that south, the southeast side of my district, so that's very helpful there. The concerns come where you, Ms. Benicki and others talked about on the southwest side of the district, and that is a concern on that side because of the fact that I wish there was a way, and I don't know if Scott could later on, sometime before we vote, can address the people, that's why I asked my question, how do you, to Scott earlier, how do you argue the point to people who live further west of where we are with that? Because that's, Ms. Benicki's issue is what I have heard, okay? From the south side part of it, that's good, and everything else with the sample streets and everything else, those folks are pretty much covered, and I'm okay. It's just the issue when it comes down to the way the sixth district is configured. And that part of it has felt that the funds have gone to this section instead of having more funds come to this section here. And that's what has caused some of the tension between the issues that I have to deal with. So, to, I mean, to vote yes on this helps this side, and this side says, well, we're getting it. To vote no, that's where they are on this one. I mean, it's just, tonight, parts of the district will be happy and parts of it not, I understood that when I walked in here. And so, because I like that. But that's why I asked that question, because it does create a frustration when so much of the monies, I think when they configure it downtown, and you say 20 million here, but we're gonna throw a million here, 2 million there. It just, I wish there was some way, it was saying something like 16 million here, and some other monies there to fix up. I drive down the Western Avenue every time, and go back home that way too, and I've been in that situation, you know? And so, therefore, I gotta deal with that. I go to shopping in Kroger, so on that side of, I go Kroger, I hear this, when I go to Walmart, I hear that side, you see? So, it depends on where I want to hear that day, it's where I go shopping for my food, and so, because people talk to me on that. And so, this week of Kroger. And so, therefore, that's why I came here with that question. I don't know how we're gonna address that to make people feel more secure on that issue because they feel that everything downtown is getting taken care of, all the businesses, all the folk who may or may not live in town. I mean, because many people live in the county, they come work downtown, and then they leave. So, they don't feel that that part is getting addressed. So, that's where, I don't know if Mr. Chair, if Scott can address that one more time to just clarify that for the record, to help people feel that, maybe he can, if you can grant him some time on that. That's what I would hope, to help a person like Ms. Benicki feel, I mean, to buy, to give her a buy-in to this, as long as a person on the south side who has that. That's my issue, and if we're able. You see what I'm saying on that? I don't know if there's any more time for Scott to address that, but I would like to defer the rest of my time of talking to, for Scott to, that's the question to ask. How do we convince the person who lives further west, further north, and is more than, well, downtown is for all of us in this heart of a city, when people actually say, "I'm gonna stay away from downtown, and I'm gonna do that." So, how do I do that? So, I don't know, that's a call to you.
Let's ask questions here.
Okay.
Or comments, first comments. Go ahead.
The gentleman who enumerated all of the historical deals which have happened in South Bend over the last 30 years, I remember all of those too, and I can even go back to the Studebaker when they closed. The year before that, there were signs all over town that said, "South Bend goes up with the lark," and I said, "What's the lark?" The times change. The one thing that's been constant, I think, in this 35 or 40-year period, has been that by and large, folks were disappointed that those two or one-way streets downtown, whether it's four lanes or three lanes or whatever it is, almost universally, people said, "We gotta find a way to get back to two-way streets." I don't know that it brings all of the proposed results. I certainly hope so, but by and large, the request for as many years as I can remember is, how do we get back to two-way streets downtown? Because for whatever reason, it just seemed to make sense. I hope it's the right decision, I hope that Mr. Ford is correct, that it's 4,000 years of appropriate decisions that bring us here, or adequate deals. I'm not sure I agree with all the necessary or the embellishments that are being proposed, because I think some of those could be spent elsewhere, but this is the proposal that's before us, this is the closest we've gotten in the 45 years. I've paid attention to what happens in South Bend, to getting back to that place where folks have asked for years. I'm supportive of it. I hope that we find the same opportunity to invest some of these TIF dollars in some of these other areas. If we have to expand a TIF district, if we're going to have TIF districts, okay, let's do that. But I believe strongly, both Mr. Davis's, the folks on the west side and the folks on the periphery oftentimes say, "When do we get our share?" Well, I think we're gonna have to start making provisions for those shares. Tonight, this is for smart streets. I hope we have conversations about the periphery in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, sir. The west side of the river is the biggest part of the city. I don't know where we lost touch with that. That's where our population is at, the majority of our population, the west side of the river, I'm not talking about the west side of South Bend, west side of the river, anything west of the river, is the biggest part of the city. I'm still a bit confused, you said embellishments, Mr. Varner?
Yes, sir.
And you're completely right. The occupancy rate downtown is not the best, as a matter of fact, downtown is almost empty. Anybody can stand here and tell me that it's not empty, I will walk with you tomorrow personally, go inside the Chase Tower, and east door in front of it down Michigan Street, and also Main Street, and we will see not a lot of businesses going on down there. I don't know where we get off thinking that downtown was actually flourishing. It's not. I've been talking to clients, or wouldn't necessarily be clients, but tenants downtown over the last couple of weeks since the Chase Tower situation came up, about them settling down and tenants have to move out. And they're really unhappy because they want to stay downtown, but they can't stay downtown for two different reasons. The market downtown is not suggesting that they should stay down because the square footage is at $20 to $22 per square foot. You can get that same square footage downtown Chicago. So, why would you stay downtown South Bend when you can go to Chicago with your business and get better amenities? It's not making any sense. So, if we are going to make provisions to make sure businesses are staying downtown or being attracted downtown, there is a number of things outside the streets that need to be changed, and that begins with the assessed values of the businesses, the buildings downtown versus the market rate downtown of buildings. We all know those things are out of whack. That is not a way of, that's not a recipe that's gonna be conducive to attracting businesses. It's not the streets, it's the market value that's not in play downtown. It's simple mathematics. So, I'm in conflict with the fact that we're saying that downtown is flourishing because it's not. And I'm gonna pull back and then be done with this. A strong city begins with strong neighborhoods. We can pour hundreds of millions of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars downtown if we want to, we can hope that it grows, but if your neighborhoods where your people are at are not flourishing, you not have a strong city. I digress.
Thank you. Just my final points. I take my car to Hedman Tire, my wife's car, too. We live in Foreston, Portage Avenue, it was very nice to jump on Lafayette and go south, all the way to Hedman Tire, a direct point A to point B route. I was in Hedman Tire today and asked them how the business was, because they're right on Lafayette, and they were used to one-way street all the time, and they said, "We are getting looks that we've never seen before." So, is there business, the silver bullet where all of a sudden it's 400% what it was before? No, but it's changed, it's changed within the street. I go to the bypass every day. Now I can use Lafayette down to Indiana, and then Indiana over to Maine and go downtown. The one thing that you see is, you're starting to see traffic dispersed. You get on Main, and it's basically a highway with a bunch of traffic. Before, you used to see the regular cars every day, we were all lined up like NASCAR going down to the bypass. One thing, I did come from DTSB's board meeting today, and Henry, I hope you take that walk with Aaron Perry, because what was reported with Scott Ford and Aaron Perry is that office space downtown is about 80% occupied. And the good thing is that people from Chase Tower were replaced downtown. So, I encourage you to meet with Aaron Perry and do walk back downtown. You're seeing downtown businesses continue to ask for this. One other point I'd like to make is Denver, Colorado. Denver had two-way streets everywhere, the town I grew up in, St. Louis, their downtown is two-way streets. You don't see a lot, you see a lot of highways, except for Washington Avenue that they redeveloped and moved to two-way streets. All of a sudden, this Washington Avenue is flourishing with residential, nightlife, everything else. Denver, Colorado is the same thing. I'm out in Denver quite a bit. You saw downtown that was pretty sterile, not many people down there, it was a concrete city, just all concrete, no people. They converted a bunch of their downtown from two-way streets to one, or one-way streets to two-way, and it's starting to flourish, and it has flourished for quite some time. So, with all this said, what we're doing tonight is setting the table. We're setting the table to allow the businesses come and develop. It's not gonna happen overnight, but this is the start, and we need to start, and it starts tonight with a vote. So, with that, I'll move for adoption.
Second?
All in favor?
No.
Sorry. John?
Starting with Mr. Purlock.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Nay.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
I'd go with a aye.
Vice President Deere.
Aye.
And President Scott.
Aye.
That would be seven votes, six ayes, one nay.
Thank you. We will now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished?
First reading.
Oh, first reading, I'm sorry.
Nice try.
I'm jumping ahead. First reading, John Gordy.
Yes, sir. Bill 515. First reading on a bill of common counsel of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter 14 of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new Article 12 addressing residential composing regulations.
Composting.
That was a joint committee that was gonna go to health and public safety and residential neighborhoods for February 23rd.
Correct.
23rd. 23rd.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in opposed? Nay. Okay, John. That was not me in there. Apologize.
Bill 615. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 3408 Ardmore Trail and the vacant parcel west and adjacent to 3408 Ardmore Trail, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District 2 in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Six fifteen goes area plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you.
Seven fifteen. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at the northwest corner of North Side Boulevard, Notre Dame Avenue, and Francis Street, commonly not, uh, known as the transcode site, Councilmatic District Number Four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Seven fifteen goes area plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Gordy. Unfinished business. Uh, just quickly, uh, updates from privilege of the floor. We're gonna try to keep these within unfinished business. Um, there's members here that have, uh, privileged floors that were filed last week. Uh, Mr. Davis, Jesse Davis, um, his is with Legal right now. They do not have any reply yet. Um, Mrs. Hughes, yours is with me. I will have a resolution to it in two weeks. Uh, Mr. Gordy, there are two, um, under your purview. Do you have anything to report?
Sure. I've got actually four in front of me, and generically, um, they are, uh, frustrated inquiries into minutes of council meetings from, uh, twenty-fourteen. Um, I'll give you some quick background on that. Um, and, uh, first of all, accept, uh, blame for a job that wasn't done probably as well as it should have been done, uh, regardless of all the extenuating circumstances. Um, one of the circumstances, and probably the one that, uh, most affected what we were doing, uh, in terms of trying to fulfill our statutory responsibility to keep records, was the fact that, uh, recording equipment was, uh, as often as not on the fritz. Um, I'll take responsibility for making, uh, decisions to try to Band-Aid it, went to the council to try to get a coordinated approach to fixing, uh, this entire system, and, uh, this goes back actually several years. And, uh, for the most part, there was no interest on the county level. Finally, uh, there was light, uh, shown on the subject in a positive way, because, uh, county auditor at the time, Pete Mullin, said, uh, "We need to fix everything. We need to fix the decor, and we need to fix the sound system." Um, and, uh, we were more than willing to do that. I went at the time to Deputy Mayor Mark Neal, serving as mayor, and asked him if he was willing to work, uh, if the city was willing to work with the county on, uh, these improvements. And, uh, Mark stepped right up and said, "We'll do our part." And, uh, from what you can see, uh, I think that's, uh, there's been a major improvement. From a technical standpoint, uh, it's a work in progress. Uh, you saw, uh, so far, it's been a, uh, a, uh, effort primarily pushed by, uh, the council's IT committee through, uh, Tim Scott, Gavin Furley, and David Varner, and, uh, and, uh, the city's IT department, their cooperation primarily through Brett Thompson and, uh, Cummings. Brett, I just know him as Brett. Um, and, uh, and people from our office who said, "What do we-" and WNIT, because the council decided to, uh, broadcast, uh, these things, not just on tape delay, but live. And to do that, uh, we didn't have the technical capacity, so, um, we collaborated with, uh, people who knew something about it, primarily WNIT, and we made the best of a bad situation in terms of existing equipment. Uh, the next thing we need to do to improve the quality of the broadcast itself is to buy new cameras, and we're in the process of working with NIT now to find out, uh, what kind of camera do we need to really get that job done right. The, uh, sound, uh, system has been improved because we are using, the county and the city are both using, uh, these mics instead of totally separate systems based on, uh, forty and fifty-year-old circuitry. So I think that, here's what we're doing specifically, is, um, now to try to fill in the gaps and post those minutes from twenty-fourteen. We're listening to, uh, the tapes, the DVDs, anything we can find that exists that is an audio record of those twenty-fourteen minutes. Um, listing what's missing, listing, of course, what's there. And, uh, it won't be as complete probably as some people will like, because some things just do not exist, uh, because of, uh, not because of human error, but because of, uh, technical breakdowns. That shouldn't happen in the future. Um, I have pledged to, uh, President Tim Scott that we will have, uh, twenty-fourteen, uh, as complete and, uh, ready to be online by the end of this month as, as I think can be done. Uh, as far as the minutes from January of twenty-fifteen, there were, of course, two, two meetings there. Those minutes were submitted for approval to, uh, council, uh, leadership, and, uh, were sent back for revisions. Um, I just made a decision today, we would post what we have in draft form, not in final form, just so people have something to look at in the meantime. By, uh, I think it was by the end of this week, we'll have-
No, I think they're done and they're approved.
Yeah, we approved those.
Okay, great.
For January.
Great. So January twenty-fifteen's taken care of. Moving ahead, we shouldn't have any of the problems that we had in twenty-fourteen, or if we do, uh, we'll have, uh-
Some listening to it.
We'll have a little better approach to fixing it. That's, that's it. I've got all that summarized on sheets here. People would like to see that, uh, in terms of, uh, the issue of missing minutes, background, the issue of breakdown to fix, and what we're doing in the meantime.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anything else on our unfinished business? Seeing, uh, new business. Anything? I have one thing on the twelfth, uh, at the Emporium, uh, from one-thirty to seven o'clock, um, a group of neighbors and neighborhood associations are having a cops coffee and conversation. If you want to talk to beat officers, officers that are out, they will be, uh, at the Emporium Building, uh, Jefferson and Niles, and, uh, you can talk to them. The idea is to take this cops coffees and conversations to different neighborhoods throughout the city. Yes, sir.
Councilman Davis and I were at the meeting that was held to discuss the cemetery last week, and so it was a good turnout. And so, please keep your eyes and ears open about that, and, um, what needs to be done, and what needs to be changed, and how we're gonna all come together on that issue.
Rafidi?
Mm-hmm.
What do we know about Rafidi?
Rafidi?
Rafidi.
We need to have an update on that.
Okay. Want an update?
Yes.
Okay. Put that with health and public safety, have an update, residential. Let's talk about the committee, yeah? Okay.
Say what? I, I can't hear down here. You said that was talked about as committee, we will put it on the committee, we'll put it on the agenda.
All right. Um, we'll move to privilege of the floor. Anybody want to speak on anything that was not spoken about tonight? Can come to the microphone. You have three minutes, and, uh, Mr. Dieter will time you. Please state your name and address.
Hi, everybody. My name is Terry Schrader. I reside at three nineteen-
Little while-
Those microphones down there have been awful tonight.
Just, please talk directly about it. Just right over the top of it.
I reside at three nineteen North Lane Street here in downtown, uh, South Bend. I consider myself a small real estate investor. I'm currently working on three small projects in downtown. Um, the number one concern that I have is crime. That's, that's my number one concern coming to downtown. And, and I understand it's a very complicated issue. I understand that. A couple of weeks ago, I took the, the opportunity to drive around downtown at night, uh, in a very targeted area. Marion Street to the north, the bus transpo to the south, Tacon Street at the car museum to the west, and St. Joseph's Street to the east. And, and I counted eighty street lights that were out. Uh, if you, if you go around the perimeter of Four Winds Field, you're gonna come across with eighteen lights that are not lit. Um, I think it's unacceptable. You know, I really just think, um-
You're right.
I, I understand that South Bend has, has a hefty plate. I know there's some problems with the street department, and my hope is that you guys are aware of that.
Thank you.
You know, lighting and crime would be, I would, I would, I'm not asking to, to go install eighty new street lights and say, "Hey, we got eighty that aren't lit." And, and from an aesthetic point of view, beautification point of view, and a lighting crime issue, I think it's, it's kind of one that we could easily fix. And, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Hi. Dan Mullis, uh, six thirty-two, South Twenty-eighth Street. I was hoping Mr. Mayor would have still been here. Um, but I see you left. Um, I have an issue with, I wanted to talk to the mayor about an issue my family had, and called three eleven, and it put me in touch with Pam. Pam put me in touch with Legal. And I asked Pam about, "I would really like to talk to the mayor." And then, all of a sudden, I was talking to Shay, or I was talking to Audrey. And then I was back to talking to Singleton and the attorney's office. I can't even talk to him by email. It's very disheartening as a citizen who voted for the mayor, and, uh, you know that I can't even talk to him. I mean, I wonder if it was Larry Cantonzardi or Mike Triplett. They probably have an easier time talking to him than I do. But, uh, I, it just blows my mind, I can't even talk to him. I, it's very frustrating. And the only recourse I had to was to turn to, uh, council members. Because, to me, the three eleven, uh, system is just basically a runaround. And, to me, it's his job and his accountability to listen to the citizens. And when he's not doing that, it becomes very frustrating. And, you know, it's something that could potentially bite him come election time, because my neighbors have seen what my family has gone through, and they know who helped me and who hasn't helped me. And they're going to remember that come election day. And it's, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Sheriff Benicki again, thirty-eight twenty-two Ford Street. I just brought a gift for John and Karema, pen and paper, works really well. You can scroll on it, check for technical difficulties. They work well for meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Scott?
Hey, Wilson, eleven nine twenty-first Street. I've been up here several times. I just wanted to scold the council tonight. Mr. Dieter, nobody knows, a lot of people don't know who you are. Your name tag is not in front of your name. Mr. Scott, please wear your glasses back. Henry Davis, why can't you sit over there instead of being way off by yourself?
Because this is my sign seat, sir.
Well, I can't understand why you'd have a sign seat way away from the rest of the council.
Because this is my sign seat.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
City council, I'm Eury Scobie, thirty-four fifteen Riverside Drive, South Bend, Indiana. I have been working my butt off for the last fifty years in this city, and I thought the mayor was the only one that were ignoring me. I'm an eighty-one-year-old senior citizen, been talking and fussing with him for Dr. Martin Luther King Drive in this city, and he doesn't walk past me in half the time. He won't even speak. He did speak tonight, but that's the kind of mayor we have in this city, that ignoring the seniors. I'm a part of what's left of South Bend. I have worked Malissins programs, I've run businesses in this city, I have worked as president of the West Washington Association, been a part of relocation of Linden School. And, like I say, I got off the train at the south, at Michigan Street. I'm a part of getting those tracks moved back out to where the Amtrak station is now that was originally the South Shore Station. I was a part of the dedication of that along with Mayor Lord Allen. I have a certificate. I was South Bend's All-American Boy way back in nineteen seventy, before this kid was born. And he doesn't give me the time of the day, and if you can't talk about Dr. Martin Luther King, then you don't need to be a mayor of any city. Because Dr. King says, "If you, uh, degrade his name in South Bend, Indiana, you would degrade it all over the world." And so I just wanted to pass that on, and I'm very glad that this young man brought that up, because I was saying it was just only me. So thanks much, and I will, uh, see you at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Have seen anybody else? Entertained emotion, did you? Salute. All due? Uh, thank you and good night.
I'd have submitted it. Because, no, I just wanted to-